Good morning. Welcome to today's Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, January 28th. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish your quorum?
Supervisor Kennedy?
Here.
Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
Here.
Supervisor Hugh?
Here.
And Chair Serna?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will you all please join Supervisor Rodriguez in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if our clerk could please read our statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is a cable cast on Metro Cable, Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today’s meeting will be repeated Friday, January 31st at 6:00 PM on Channel 14 and viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and the use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. Comments made by the public during Board of Supervisors’ meeting may include information that could be inaccurate or misleading, particularly concerning topics relating to public health, voter registrations, and elections. The County of Sacramento does not endorse or validate the accuracy of public statements made during these opulque public forums. The recordings are shared to provide transparency and access to the proceedings of public meetings. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file a speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. Please note that off-agenda public comments will take place for a maximum of 30 minutes. The remainder of the off-agenda public comments will take place at the conclusion of all time matters in the afternoon. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk’s office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, I want to welcome everyone who has joined us here in chambers this morning. We do have a full morning agenda, and I just want to underscore again the fact that we respectfully ask everyone to please, everyone that’s intending to address the Board, to please keep your comments to no more than two minutes. That’s in place so that everyone who wishes to address the Board and petition their county government has the right and will have the opportunity to do so, but we need to manage that in a orderly fashion. And again, if we have more than 30 minutes expected during the morning off-agenda section of today’s full agenda, then you’re certainly welcome to come back at the end if you are low on the queue. So with that, we will now move to the first section of our agenda, which is off-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do you have our first name?
Our first speaker today is Kathy Dodson.
My name is Kathy Dodson, and I’m a resident of Sacramento County. I understand that the county is considering approving developments outside the urban growth boundaries. I’m against this approval because it will increase vehicle miles traveled, which increases air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. I raised my children here in Sacramento, and now I have young grandchildren. As much as I would love for them to grow up near me, now that I’m aware of the air pollution levels here, I’ve discouraged my children from returning to live here, especially not with grandchildren whose lungs are still developing. According to the American Lung Association, the Sacramento-Roseville area is the seventh worst area in the nation for year-round particle pollution and ozone pollution. According to the Sacramento County 2021 greenhouse gas inventory, on-road vehicles accounted for the largest amount of greenhouse gas emissions, 43%. There is a solution to limit vehicle miles traveled in our area. According to SECOG’s growth projections for up to the year 2050, we have the ability to meet most of Sacramento housing needs by infill development in existing communities. This would clearly add less vehicle miles traveled, creating less air pollution and less greenhouse gases. I noticed the beautiful mural outside for the first time walking in here. It’s a vision of clean air, clean water, animals, and people riding their bicycles. This could happen if infill development is chosen rather than sprawl development. I urge the Board of Supervisors to oppose sprawl development and increase infill development. And if this happens, I might be able to think about encouraging my children to return here to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we’re speaking on the same topic. May we come here?
You have two minutes each.
Hi, I’m Megan Elsie. I’m a member of 350 Sacramento, which is a climate justice organization. We oppose sprawl development, including the Upper West Side project for the reasons that Kathy said. And we do need housing. We need lots of housing in the greater Sacramento area, but we need smart growth, otherwise known as infill housing, and the Upper West Side project is not. Now, this project has been advertised as a mixed-use development, but that will not happen. That won’t happen because, as Kathy was talking about, there’s been enough housing approved that will meet the needs of Sacramento residents for decades to come. So no businesses are going to want to develop there until the development is totally built out, which won’t be for decades. So the people that live there will have to drive many miles because it will not be a mixed-use development area. So the environmental concerns are many, including climate change, and we have just seen what happened in LA as a result of climate change with the fires down there. We are not immune to such effects. The people in LA thought, oh, a fire won’t come into the city, but it did. That could happen here. Or maybe more likely is floods with our two rivers here. So we must do whatever we can to lower greenhouse gases, and that means building the housing that we need inside the urban boundaries, the urban services area and the urban growth boundary. And there is plenty of land inside the urban boundaries and close to public transportation so people won’t have to drive as much. So please consider these and consider that climate change causes extreme weather, which leads to injury, death, illness, especially among the poor, seniors, and people of color. Thank you very much.
Hi, I’m Lisa Kong. I moved from the Bay Area to Carmichael a few years ago, and I lived in California all my life. As the LA fires rage on, I am very concerned about the effects of climate change on my home state and my home. Sacramento has inspired me to become a gardener and to become fascinated in native plants. So I know now that native plants and trees are uniquely superior carbon sinks because they’re adapted to our local climate and our local soil, and they promote a healthy and diverse ecosystem. If you build the Upper West Side project, you’re going to destroy 2,000 acres of important natural land. I know, I’ve heard that you have parks and agricultural land planned, and of course there will be suburban gardens, but it’s vitally important that we plan to preserve and maintain wild areas. Take as an example the missing middle housing ordinance of 2023 that effectively ended single-home zoning in Sacramento to centralize building on already-built areas instead of encouraging urban sprawl. I urge you to please, in your housing planning, to keep California climate goals in mind and to help California reach those goals. Thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Wensel.
My name is Patricia Wensel, and I’m here to offer public comment about the Sheriff’s Office’s policy to stop answering most mental health calls and to treat the ones they do respond to as criminal major events. I’m speaking only for myself, but my comments are informed by my work as the NAMI Sacramento Helpline Coordinator and by my membership on nine local boards and committees regarding mental health. The Sheriff’s Department funding that they no longer need to respond to these mental health calls should be transferred immediately to Behavioral Health Services. The CWRT, the Community Wellness Response Team, or Civilian Crisis Response Team, should be granted first responder status and pay so that they can do things like interrogated communities as needed and to facilitate recruitment to these hard-to-fill positions. 988 is not a replacement for calls being dispatched by 911. It takes 10 to 40 minutes for calls to be transferred to the CWRT dispatcher. We should adopt the model pioneered by Albuquerque that places a dedicated dispatcher in 911. It is not appropriate to place the burden of screening these calls on 988 as their culture results in calls for assistance in cases of grave disability being denied services on a regular basis. CWRT currently answers 100 calls per month. I estimate the number of calls that will be referred to 988 at 1,000 calls per month. What is certain is that people who are suicidal and have a weapon will die in greater numbers than they might have done since no one will be answering those calls. And the 40% of jail inmates with serious mental illness will increase as the Sheriff’s Department mental health calls will treat all emergencies as criminal calls.
Can you conclude your comments, please?
Yes, I also want to say that I support the funding for behavioral health programs on today’s agenda.
Great, thank you. Before we get to the next speaker, let me just remind everyone that the Board cannot by law take any action or have any extended discussion on items that are brought during off-agenda. With that said, I’m looking to our county executive because this is an issue that has just been brought up by the last speaker that I think has a number of us concerned. So David, can you just very briefly explain what we’re doing, working with the Sheriff’s Department to kind of get to the bottom of what we are trying to decipher from different sources?
Absolutely, Supervisor, and I’ll ask Deputy County Executive Eric Jones to fill in any gaps I have, but we are working with the Sheriff’s Department. We were aware of the policy change last week. They were encouraged, the Sheriff’s Department was encouraged, to bring this to their Community Response Commission, and they did do a presentation to them. Just as a reminder, you have an agenda item next week to hear from the Community Review Commission on their annual update from last year. We continue to work with them, but as you know, we have no control over the policies of the Sheriff’s Department, and the only thing we do have control of is their budget.
No need for Mr. Jones to chime in because I don’t want to get an evil stare from county council over here, so.
Thank you.
But I do appreciate that, and thank you for the comments. Next speaker, please.
Ryan Holtz.
My passage from infallible scripture that I will be reading today is from Matthew, Chapter 28, verses 18 through 20. Jesus has just risen from the dead like he said he would throughout the years of his ministry and is standing before eleven confused disciples, and he said, quote, “All authority has been given to me in heaven and on earth; go therefore and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, teaching them to keep all that I have commanded you; and behold, I am with you always, even to the end of the age,” end quote. To the Board, due to this optimistic, objective political statement, I want to submit to you this morning, you all have a king. Regardless of race, gender, political party, or religion, we all have a king who has all authority, not only in heaven but also on earth. He has given you, the civil magistrates, a job to do justice, punish evildoers, and reward the good, Romans, Chapter 13. And you don’t reward the good by creating arbitrary rules, regulations, laws, codes, acts, ordinances, fines, and penalties. Jesus didn’t give you your position to be autonomous. In the Bible, he has given us all things pertaining to life and godliness, 2 Peter 1 3. In closing, I am not here to get you to reconsider Jesus or even give him a 60-day trial. I’m not here to get you to vote for Jesus because that’s not what a monarchy is. This isn’t a democracy, this is a kingship. And this king that everyone knows exists according to Romans, Chapter 1, says we need to repent and bow the knee. And to the civil magistrates, he says in Psalm, Chapter 2, verses 10 through 12, quote, “So now, O kings, show insight; take warning, O judges of the earth; serve Yahweh with fear and rejoice in trembling; kiss the son lest he become angry and you perish in the way, for his wrath may soon be kindled. How blessed are all those who take refuge in him?” End quote, and amen. Thank you.
Victor Shabon.
Good morning. My family came from the Soviet Union, formerly Soviet Union. My father, my father’s father survived the massacre when he was 17 in 1946 after the war ended, just because he was Romanian, and the Soviet Union did not want people to leave the Soviet Union. My mother’s grandpa did not survive a Gulag camp starvation. He starved just because, he was taken to the Gulag just because he was a Baptist Christian. And I still have his letter, last letter, asking for food. Your duty as civil magistrates is to punish evildoers. That’s the main duty of the civil magistrate, according to God. And I want to read Isaiah 10 where God says this, “Woe to those who decree iniquitous decrees and the writers who keep writing oppression, to turn aside the needy from justice and to rob the poor from my people the right of their right, that widows may be their spoil and that they may make the father less their prey. What will you do on the day of punishment and in the ruin that will come from afar? Unjust rulers will face ruin when God’s judgment comes.” I’m just here to remind you that your duty is to serve God with fear and to do justice for the people that elected you and put you in this place. American rulers in history consulted the Bible to make rules. When was the last time you opened the Bible to consult it before you made a decision? This is my admonition to you. Submit to Christ and rule according to God’s law. Amen.
Sandy Marquez.
Sandy here from We the People. I just have to say I’m so excited that we have a new administration leading this beautiful nation. What an amazing week we’ve had. But I am here today to congratulate both D1 and D4 supervisors for winning their races. I’d like to also welcome the new district board member, Rosario Rodriguez, and thank you for agreeing to join all the seasoned supervisors here on the Sacramento County Board. I’d like to thank all of you again for taking your oaths of office to uphold and defend both the United States Constitution and our California state constitution. I pray that you all apply this knowledge to your governmental decision-making for this fair county as you represent your constituents. With that said, I would like to remind you that Sacramento County does have a Constitution Discussion Group where We the People are learning more about the highest law of the land. We now have multiple locations in four different counties, and remind you that you are all invited to join us, including the staff and all the citizenry wanting to learn more. In addition, we are hosting a movie night this coming Thursday, January 30th, at the Sacramento location where we will be showing the film entitled “The Dangers of Democracy.” Please refer to the flyer for more details. I’m going to go ahead and give some copies to the clerk for you, and thank you again. I look forward to the great constitutional guided plans and decisions you’ll be making for this amazing county. Thank you.
Debbie Woolley.
Happy 2025. Wanted to congratulate Rosario. I was able to attend the first Board of Supervisors’ meeting this year, but I just wanted to congratulate you how you stepped up, and I really admired the way that you started going forward in an assertive and very wonderful way, so thank you. And congratulations, Phil, on being the chairperson, and Rich for winning your race. I know Sandy kind of said the wrong thing, but anyway. I just wanted to let you know something exciting that’s been happening in my world, and that is realizing that God gives us our rights, not government. And in California, we have a constitution that was written by the people as a compact, as an agreement, that the government would never, ever, ever trample our rights. And so they put all of the reminders to government that we’re going to take an oath that in Article 1, these were never to be violated. So I wanted to read the question, “Are all men by nature free and independent? Are we free? Are we really free and independent? Are we free to have and obtain property and enjoy their property and enjoy our liberties and acquire and possessing our property and pursuing and obtaining our happiness? Or do we have to check with boards and agencies and we have to check in and make sure that we’ve checked all the boxes and gotten the agencies and the government’s permission? So I just wanted to put that out there to say that we need to really, really consider what’s going on here in our county, and I see that I’m behind in my time. Thank you for listening and hope you can join us on Thursday.
Thank you.
Perry Farucci.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Perry Farucci. I’m a member of New California State, and today I’d like to read an excerpt of the letter from New California State to President Donald Trump dated January 20th. This foretalk about New California State provides a solution. The existing state of California cannot fix itself because the same politicians that crammed California into its current unconstitutional mess would be the same politicians who would try to resolve the problems they caused. The solution is New California State, which would unburden the majority of the California landmass and provide existing state of California with an income stream that would resolve the existential budget shortfall that is now plain for all to see. The New California State movement is the vehicle to resolve existing California’s existential financial crisis. Our movement is authorized by the new state’s clause of Article 4, Section 3 of the United States Constitution because NCS is closely following the model of West Virginia when it separated itself from Virginia during the Civil War. Just as the Commonwealth of Virginia seceded from the Union in 1861, so the current state of California has seceded from the Union by its wholesale violation of the guarantees of Article 4, Section 4 of the U.S. Constitution and by, anyway, creating a mono-party dictatorial government similar to the government of North Korea, Communist China, and Cuba. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Chet.
Good morning. I am here today to address the urgent need to push back against California’s unlawful sanctuary state policy and to commend Huntington Beach for taking a stand as a non-sanctuary city. Their leadership sends a clear message that the rule of law matters and must be upheld. One glaring example of the disregard for the rule of law is the widespread violations of Title 8, U.S. Code 1324, which makes it a federal felony to knowingly harbor, transport, or shield illegal aliens. President Biden, Vice President Harris, and Governor Newsom all have blatantly disregarded this law. Their actions supporting sanctuary policies, providing illegal aliens with taxpayer-funded benefits, and failing to enforce immigration laws are not just policy disagreements, they are violations of federal law. If every American were made aware of Title 8, U.S. Code 1324, they would realize the gravity of this situation. These actions undermine public safety, burden taxpayers, and erode faith in our justice system. They are a direct attack on President Trump’s America-first agenda, which prioritizes the safety, sovereignty, and well-being of American citizens. Here are three guarantees under Article 4, Section 4 of the Constitution, a republican form of government, protection from invasion, and protection against domestic violence. California’s sanctuary policies blatantly violate these guarantees by prioritizing the interests of illegal aliens over the rights and security of American citizens. Every politician who has voted to establish sanctuary cities or provide illegal aliens with taxpayer-funded benefits is complicit. They all should be held accountable and prosecuted under federal law. Huntington Beach’s declaration is a wake-up call. It’s time for every city and county in California to reject these unconstitutional policies, to restore the rule of law, and to protect the rights of their citizens. Together, we can demand justice and hold these leaders accountable. This will ensure that America’s future is one of security, prosperity, and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Calvin.
My name is Kenneth Calvin, Jr. I’m with New California State as well, but just another citizen of California, United States of America. We’ve been coming down here for months now, talking with the Board of Supervisors, trying to get your attention on different things to do with crime, elections, and I know that you guys put out a statement in the very beginning to kind of ignore the comments that are being brought up, but this last election season was egregious, right? We didn’t even have voter ID for anybody. Anybody could just walk in and vote. I could be Patrick Kennedy and walk in and vote today, and nobody could say anything to me regarding that. So obviously, we have a problem. So the reason why I mention that is because New California State is launching based on that premise that we do not have a right to freedom from invasion, freedom from domestic violence. These streets are not safe. I’m in them every single week. I work in outreach. I’ve been doing it for the last five years. And we also don’t have a right to republican form of government. We are not represented, because I know that no Californian would want to be able to have anyone just be able to go down just be able to go down and vote and not even have ID. Where is the accountability? So form follows function. Furthermore, my grandparents grew up in segregated Texas. My grandfather came from Italy. He had the standard salute of Mussolini and Hitler. He's 94 years old, and so they know all about tyranny. This is an image of what most people would regard as tyranny: the things that happened to the Jews, the things that happened to the slaves. They're pictures that we're all very familiar with. But I want to show you something that we're not all quite as familiar with, what's happening in our community under your supervision. In Sacramento, we are killing our children in the womb up until six months, 25 weeks, every single week. You need to do something about this. Their blood is on your hands. You must bow the knee to Jesus Christ and protect these little kids.
Can you think? Lynn Reeves.
Good morning. California once was a beacon of opportunity and freedom and now finds itself in a troubling freefall with a government that struggles to meet the most basic functions required by both the U.S. and the California state constitutions. It is clear something has gone wrong. Today, California is effectively a one-party state dominated by Democrats who hold super majorities in the state Assembly, the state Senate, and the House of Representatives. The California State Assembly, for example, has 80 members. 60 are Democrats and 19 are Republicans. In the state Senate, 30 out of the 40 are Democrats. On the federal level, California's congressional delegation is overwhelmingly filled with Democrats. In fact, there are 43 Democrats and only nine Republicans. This dominance hasn't come naturally. Allegations of election manipulation involving fraud and foreign interference have definitely surfaced. That claim that the cooperation between state officials, cartels, and even foreign governments has played a huge role in shaping California's political landscape. While these claims remain controversial, the shift toward a one-party rule is undeniable. This is not a direction that fosters our republic's values or the balance of power. Instead, California's trajectory mirrors that of historical one-party states like North Korea, Venezuela, and the former Soviet Union, where dissent is stifled and the checks and balances are eroded. It raises the question, is California still the land of freedom and opportunity? Or is it now a one-party state where control and power overrule the will of the people? You are our county's representatives. Are you even listening to your constituents? A new controlling authority is coming. Are you prepared for the consequences? I hope so.
Jim Reeves.
Good morning. For what it's worth, the 1848-49 Constitution is a compact. It's the only constitution California has that is a compact. The 1879 Constitution, at best, is corporate law, and it has been changed over 900 times because you've got a 51% majority vote. To do so, and it's kind of buggered. This is a paragraph from a letter that we sent Donald John Trump, the President of the United States. And he was on his desk yesterday at 12:30 noon, and it has been warmly received. He liked what we're saying, and that's as far as that goes. "New California State requests that our new President of the United States immediately and use all means necessary to restore the most basic of God-given rights to the U.S. citizens living in the state of California. The state of New California requests federal intervention by implementing the following: the Insurrection Act of 1807, the Emergency Economic Powers Act, and the reorganized government of California following West Virginia's model, and the support of the formation of the new state of California using the Great State of New California Act." Now, I'm mentioning two different governments here: reorganized California and new state of California. There's a clue there that's coming. "Our new California State members have sworn an oath to uphold the freedoms for our citizens and preserve a representative, quote-unquote, republican form of government guaranteed by Article 4, Sections 3 and 4 of the United States Constitution." Thank you.
Elizabeth Kyno Hopper.
Good morning, supervisors and staff. Thank you for being here. If I could use that same camera device. Anyway, my topic is about the sheriff's new policy--
Excuse me. Please put what you need to show on the white surface there. Thank you.
Does that work? The topic is the sheriff's new policy for non-response to mental health calls. And my main point is that waiting for a crime to occur continues the myth and stigma and discrimination towards people who are living their-- they're trying to live their best with conditions outside their control, with persistent serious mental illness, as well as persistent substance use illness. And so, right now, the Sheriff's Department is calling on the Community Wellness Response Team to kind of, to send their alternative response to kind of fill that gap, to work with people who are calling in about a crisis happening in a home space or a public space. And so what this particular page shows you is that Sacramento County supervisors did support Sacramento County Behavioral Health Standing Up, this community wellness response team. Currently, we have 10 teams responding for all of Sacramento County for a 24/7 period of time. That's far less than what sheriffs have of responding to all these mental health calls. So I'm asking for Board of Supervisors, as well as behavioral health, to immediately work on expanding this program. This is the thing people are counting on, to coordinate with the ambulances that are newly allowed to do transport to psychiatric hospitals. And even bigger than that, what I'm asking for is CWRT-- I'm actually on that advisory board, although I don't speak for them-- we need, we have been asking for two years to have a public campaign to make sure that everyone in Sacramento County knows they have a right to call not just 988, because the first dialogue is about suicide. You have to stay on the line to get to other behavioral health crises. We need to get the word out about the CWRT program. Sheriff's Department is advertising it as the Hope Line. Sacramento County is advertising it as Community Wellness Response Team. This has to be remedied, and that campaign needs to be prioritized. Thank you.
Brooke Miller Jacobs.
Good morning. My name is Brooke Miller Jacobs. I live in my home that we purchased at The Mill on January 11, 2024. I do have a question for the county, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Where were you on Tuesday night, January 7, at 9:55 p.m.? I remember where I was. I was calling 911. I was calling to report a shooting, to report that at least one bullet hit my home. A bullet traveled 650 feet from the Marina Vista Public Housing Projects, more specifically, the 60 block of CB Circle, and hit my daughter's bedroom window while she was sitting in her room. She was sitting three feet away from the bullet that hit her window. I remember hearing the gunshots, silence, more gunshots. I remember my daughter screaming and running down the stairs. I remembered the dispatcher telling us to get away from the windows and lay on the floor. KCRA News reported two people, including a teenager, were shot in Sacramento's Upper Land Park neighborhood on Tuesday night. Officers responded to reports of a shooting just before 10 p.m. in the 60 block of CB Circle near 5th Street. Every January 7, I will relive this moment. This is not okay. Every time I hear a helicopter, sirens, loud booms, and fireworks that just happened two nights ago, I relive this terror. I am down on the floor calling 911. The last thing I think of when I go to sleep is, is it safe to go to sleep? Will this happen again? My daughter is not able to sleep by herself in her own room. I cannot tell her she's safe. What can you do? What are you willing to do to have SHRA do something about this? Stop this violence. This is not okay. You have a relationship with SHRA Commission. You need to put more pressure on them to stop the violence--
Can you please conclude your statement?
--and constant shooting on the properties. It's not okay.
Thank you. And just as a respectful note, your unfortunate incident occurred in the city of Sacramento. So, of course, as your county representative, my staff are available to help you communicate what you need to, to your city council person or the city in total. So, thank you.
Final speaker, Martha Esch.
Good morning--
Morning.
--Board, and good morning, public, everybody. I brought some visuals. These are a couple of my paintings I painted years ago in Locke. Ooh, that's intense color there. But my comment is to your item number 51.
If you're going to speak to an item that's on the agenda, you need to wait until the agenda item is called.
Okay, I'll make it a non-agenda item.
Okay, go for it.
I noticed in your packet, in your packet, it says "no materials attached" to some of the items. And this prohibits the public and people who are directly involved with your boards and commissions within your packet, who you folks supervise. It prevents the public from being allowed to know who it is that you're appointing or nominating to different local boards. That's, I believe, a Brown Act violation. And under one of your items, it has 31 different boards and commissions that you are appointing board people to. But we don't know who it is. Specific to my hometown, Locke, California, we've been told that it's a common interest development. Other documents say it's a charity organization. Other documents say it's a social welfare, 501(c)(6) or 501(c)(4). We ask questions. We ask questions. Why do not the property owners get to elect the representatives on that specific board?
Can you please wrap up your comments?
Not given answers.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
So that concludes off agenda items and Section 1 of our agenda. So we'll move on to Section 2. Yes.
Before you folks all leave, I just wanted to remind the county exec that I've asked for a presentation from our registrar of voters on what we cannot do by state law and what we can or are allowed to do by state law. So we are trying to bring something forward to see that we can at least do anything that's possible to remove some of the doubts and suspicions. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other board comments, then we'll now move on to Section 2.
Section 2 is Consent Matters. Items number 2 through 37 have a couple of clerk notes. On item number 4, you'll be acting as the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, which they are requesting to approve in a resolution delegating the authority to the district administrator to negotiate and execute a new lease between the Carmichael Recreation and Park District and the Sacramento Fine Arts Center. We are requesting that this board continue this item to 225.
Okay, do we need to take action now?
We do.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved by Supervisor Desmond, second by Supervisor Rodriguez. There's a comment by Supervisor Hume? No, okay. Please vote then.
And that item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. And item number 5, you'll be acting as the Board of Supervisors, adopt an ordinance amending Title 16, Chapter 16.2 of the Sacramento County Code relating to Sacramento Housing Code. And this item waived full reading and continued from January 7. And that's all of the clerk notes that I have for today.
All right, very good. Then I will look to my colleagues to see if they have any comments, questions, or wish to pull specific consent items for separate vote. We'll start with Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief comment on item 11 and item 13.
Did you say item 11 and 13?
Yes.
So item 11 is the Bell Street Safe Routes to Schools Project Environmental Document Mitigated Negative Declaration. And item number 13 is to authorize the county purchasing agent or designate to execute contract number MA00046373 for NCAP Technology System with WASTEC Corporation for the Rubicon Smart City application in the amount of $2,953,752.
Thank you. Very supportive of both these items. Just wanted to just make brief comments thanking staff. First of all, with respect to item 11, I want to thank our DOT staff. This is a really exciting project, Safe Routes to Schools project, that will improve the environment for pedestrians and other multi-mobility users in that area. It's especially important in that Arden Arcade part of unincorporated Sacramento County where we have a very large and growing refugee population. That, I mean, I'm seeing more pedestrians use our roadways than I've seen in decades in my part of the county where I live. So this is a crucial project, and I think it's going to be really great for the community and much safer for those using our roadway. So thank you. The second one, item 13. I had the chance to go meet with our Director of Waste Management and his team last week to get a briefing on this new NCAP technology. I think it's another, it's a great project in terms of increasing our efficiency in Sacramento County, increasing our service delivery to the constituents in Sacramento County. So I'm very supportive of it, and then thanks staff for bringing this to the board. I also look forward to ways where I think we can maybe use this technology to locate issues in our transportation infrastructure and address them proactively, because I think it has a lot of opportunity and potential in that regard. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And before we go to Supervisor Hume, just let me underscore that last comment. I think it's a very, very good one. It's one that I think we've all made at different times, under different circumstances, which is to try and maximize the use of infield staff from various agencies to kind of cross-pollinate in terms of letting other sister agencies know where we might have service delivery challenges, including code enforcement. And so I made some of the same suggestions during the same briefing that I received. So thank you again for raising that important issue, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I have comments on item 6, 8, 29, and then a question on item 31.
So item number 6 is to approve the Mather South Large Lot Map, final map. Item number 8 is Contract Number 4614, curb, gutter, and sidewalk replacement project 2023, final contract acceptance. Item number 29 is retroactive authority to apply for and accept a grant funding award and execute a retroactive revenue agreement with CareStar Foundation in the amount of $50,000 for the term beginning January 1, 2025, through July 31, 2026, for the Department of Health Services Emergency Medical Services Triage to Alternate Destinations Program. And lastly, item 31 is to recommend it changes to the County of Sacramento's General Assistance Policy. And we also do have public comment on that item, Chair Serna.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. For item number 6, just a first comment. I was out in the Mather HOA speaking last night, and they are very excited to see this project move forward because of what it means for Eagles Nest Road or the extension of Zinfandel and the extension of the utilities and infrastructure accompanied with that. And so I would say that as we approve this item and as we look to perfect the close of escrow for the large lot developer, we do that expediently. So hopefully, they can come out of the ground. If not this year, then the beginning of construction season next year. But I also just wanted to call out that the board letter cites Sacramento Sewer District, Sacramento Area Sewer District, as well as Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. One of those bodies no longer exists. They are both SAC sewer now. And so just to make that note. Then on item number 8, this is the curb and gutter and sidewalk. It included a lot of improvements in the Rosemont area in District 5. You know, I just want to thank staff. A lot of times, these sort of minor projects get overlooked or swept under the rug. But this is important for mobility for people, particularly with disabilities and compliance with ADA. But it's also connectivity and making our neighborhoods more walkable. And so I just appreciate the work that's been done. Item 29, just a simple comment in the scale and scope of things that we do is this agency, a $50,000 contract is like budget dust, as they say, or-- do as this agency, a $50,000 contract is like budget dust, as they say, or, you know, the change you might find in your sofa. But I just really appreciate anything we could do to get the triage to alternate destinations program stood up and functioning well so that we get the right care for the right people at the right time. And then my last one on item 31 is I have a question. First of all, I appreciate the effort of this item in trying to subvert a growth request. But given that a lot of the changes have to do with eligibility requirements or preclusions from participation, and I understand from reading the board letter that the amount per individual is very small, but it says that it applies to a small subset. And so I'm just wondering if we can have, if you could give me an idea of how many people we're talking about to participate in this program.
Thank you Supervisor Hume. Ethan Dye is here, the Director of DHA, and he may be able to comment on that.
Also Deputy Katari, she's about to chime in. Whoever has the answer. Okay.
You need a rearview mirror, David.
Morning Chair Serna, members of the board. Ethan Dye, Director for the Department of Human Assistance. The GA program now has about 2,100 eligibles.
Okay.
And we have a pending backlog of about 1,200. And so what this change does allows us to reduce the administrative burden on our customers and not request items that are not requested in any of our programs, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, CalFresh. So it streamlines our program and hopefully gets us to be able to, to approve applications faster. So we are not paying retro benefits to customers, and we're actually staying within the program guidelines.
Okay. And so then, you know, in aggregate, at the $2,100 level, there'd be a little over $2 million exposure for all of the individuals. Do you think anything about this opens the floodgates for folks to accept these, these monies that aren't eligible or wouldn't be eligible otherwise?
So we have 2,100 folks who are eligible. The GA grant is time limited to three months out of every 12 months, and it's a max grant of $372.
Yep.
We do not forecast that additional folks will come on because there are other rules within the GA program that are still applicable. So it'll keep with the eligibility rules of Medi-Cal, CalFresh, and GA. We don't forecast that our arcade facility is going to grow.
And so if I were to read into what you just said, does that mean essentially the prerequisites or qualifications would be vetted through some other sort of assistance program that then would trickle down to this?
Correct. And in the new world, you will not, so we've created a GA-only unit. You have to be Medi-Cal and CalFresh eligible.
Okay.
Where we have, where we receive all of your documentation, IDs, citizenship, all of the necessary documents for those programs. We would apply those to GA and not require anything additional such as liens, or things on property. So we're looking to streamline with other eligibility components.
Well, then I thank you for finding efficiencies. As I said at a previous meeting, optimizing is a verb. And so, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Supervisors Rodriguez or Kennedy?
No.
Right, seeing none. I know we have those that are in the audience that are signed up to address the board on consent matters. But before we go to public comment, I have a question on item 17.
Item 17 is a salary resolution amendment adding 30 full-time or FTE recruitment allowance deputy sheriff recruits.
Great, thank you. And I suspect this is probably best addressed to Mr. Jones. It's a simple question. Our board letters follow a fairly standard format where we have fiscal analysis or consequence structured at the end, the conclusion of those board letters. Typically, we can at a glance see that there's a determination that there's no effect to the existing budget, or that whatever is being suggested for change or amendment is within the current budget. So I didn't see that necessarily. All I saw was, saw was no net county cost. So I guess my, my simple question is, is this change in the 24-25 budget?
So Chair, the question is, can you repeat the question one more time? I'm sorry.
So, so the, if you look at the board letter, there's no mention of the budget. It just says there's no net county cost consequence. So it's, it's difficult for me to understand whether that means that because they're going to use vacancies, the way I understand from the substance of the, of the letter, to fund the 30 FTEs, that, was that, were those vacancies accounted for within the 24-25 budget?
Yes.
Okay. In the future. I think, again, just to kind of keep it clear and consistent, some small reference to in the budget, out of the budget, would, at least for this supervisor make it just a little bit easier since we have to scan a number of documents for every, every meeting, especially for our consent calendar, which is usually very, very long. So appreciate that. With that, Madam Clerk, call our first speaker for Consent Matters.
Our first speaker is James Starr.
Good morning. My name is James Starr. I'm the Chair of United Public Employees and a county employee assigned for the last 15 years to the General Assistance Program. I'm here to speak with you about item number 31, the proposed programmatic changes to the county's General Assistance Program. As to the proposed changes themselves, I have no objections, other than that they should have happened long ago because they represent unnecessary barriers to desperately needed services for the most destitute members of our community, many of whom are mentally ill and homeless. There's a huge problem, though, and it's not mentioned in my department's report to this board. The problem is that the proposed changes come in tandem with huge staffing cuts, a final death blow to GA services after years of attrition and neglect. In 2019, there were 42 GA eligibility staff. Six months ago, there were 35. Last Friday, there were 31. Yesterday, that was cut to six workers. Six workers to handle intake appointments booked out to May 25th. Six workers to administer benefits for several thousand customers with active cases. Six workers to disposition more than 1,900 ungranted GA cases, some of them pending since July, the same six workers. Even before yesterday's final draconian cuts, the low staffing levels caused suffering. One of our customers was found dead in our doorway at the main GA office on November 5. I hope he got his benefits before he died. The, the cuts in staffing have created a perfect storm for our customers and for county employees who are working their guts out to provide the tiny maximum monthly benefit that makes the difference between unsatisfactory, substandard housing and no housing at all. Please, let's do something about this. I respectfully request that the allocation in funding for General Assistance Administration be increased significantly immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Madam Clerk, before you call the next speaker, who I suspect may be addressing us on the, the same matter, can we make sure that we read into the record the item description or title before that speaker comes?
If I could read it again, I read it earlier.
Yep.
Item number 31 is recommended changes to the County of Sacramento's General Assistance Policy continued from December 10, 2024, item number 36.
Very good, thank you. And before Mr. Samaras addresses us, Supervisor Kennedy is in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess before Mr. Samara gets up, assuming what, I know what he's going to get up and speak on, I'd like a response to the previous speaker as far as the assertion of we're down to six workers in the GA and with the 1,900 GA clients, which we have even admitted ourselves in the queue. I'd like a response as to is six workers in fact reality? And to, if so, is, is that adequate to get us to a place in which we're getting these through the queue in a reasonable manner?
Morning Chair Serna, members of the board. To answer your question, I want to be very clear that there are not and never have been 36 GA workers. The workers who are assigned to the General Assistance Program are multi-program workers. 60% of their time is dedicated to Medi-Cal, 25% of their time is dedicated to CalFresh, and 15% of their time is dedicated to general assistance. Of those 36 assigned workers, 15% is five. And so there are only technically five general assistance workers pre and six post. So is the number of GA, how's it, is the number of GA staff adequate with the program changes that we're asking? It gives us time to look at it. I do believe it's close, but I don't, I cannot come to the board and say, I think I need over what I need. I want to be able to come to you with a real number, a real solution, and work with the county exec costs to be able to do that.
Can I follow up on that?
Sure.
So I suspect you're, you're probably not going to come at us at a later date and say, we have too many. So, I mean, is it too far-fetched to assume that we probably will need more?
I think it's hard to speculate. And the reason I say that, and I appreciate the questions, and I appreciate the staff who are here to talk on this. They are amazing staff. The, changing the policy gives us the ability to quicker do applications, which means we won't have cases that are pending out as long. And so looking at the number of incoming applications, which over the last six months has averaged about 1,230, looking at that four to six gives us that exact number. And we have about 25 to 50% of our customers who are no-shows every day. So I, I feel today confidently that the number that we're putting forward, and I'm asking you today, gets us into better.
Mr. Villanueva does, so it's, it sounds like we will, I know Supervisor Kennedy wishes to address Ethan again. So we'll get to Supervisor Kennedy here in a moment. But how will this be presented to the board, either before or hopefully not, it's not protracted and it becomes a budget issue or agendized item? But is there any plan in place for how the board will be informed, the public will be informed, hopefully in advance of the budget?
Right.
In terms of the need for?
Oh, the need for staff. So in any given board meeting, we can add additional staff. You've made a question on, on some of the positions that were added for the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
So we can bring that forward at any time. I think, if I remember correctly, in the board letter, it references that they will study it, as Mr. Dye said, and bring that back to the board when they have the appropriate amount of data.
Do we have, now I'm looking to Deputy Executive Katari, do we have enough flexibility, vacancies in this year's budget to be able to do this without the requirement for a four-fifths vote?
I can't answer that right now.
That's kind of an important threshold question.
Yeah, we can look into that. Our, our general funds that come into the department now, DHA, aren't as much as they used to because homelessness and housing is separate now. So we'd have to look a little bit closer based on all of the other impacts we're starting to see, including federal impacts. We just need to see if there's some wiggle room there this fiscal year. Otherwise, we can certainly come, bring that back to the board as soon as we have more data, as Mr. Villanueva said.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you again, Chair. So what I'm hearing, just so that I understand, in your opinion, five or six people doing this and dedicated to this, without the procedural changes likely would not get us where we need to be as far as clearing the backlog and getting it done in a timely and efficient way. But we're asking you to crystal ball it, and you're, at this point, you're saying, I think so, which is fine, because you don't know. I mean, we're, we're crystal balling it here, that, that will be adequate with the procedural changes, and we'll only know that once those are in place. Is that a fair synopsis?
Yes. If, if the approved changes are not approved, it will not look any different than it does today, and I will have a six to eight month book out. And that is for homeless folks, folks with mental health, who if we don't, if we don't address their need fairly quick to the time they come in to talk to us, we lose them. And so you're absolutely correct. Absent a policy change, it will not look any different. With the policy changes, we anticipate being able to bring that in and serve our customers quicker.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Samara.
Good morning, Ted Samara, United Public, Executive Director of United Public Employees. We represent now 3,400 county employees. That's no longer 3,600, Mr. Villanueva, because the county hasn't been hiring. But on that same note, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Dye has come up here to let you know. But in the interim, it's my members that are suffering. They're the ones doing the work, trying to get the benefits. What has not been mentioned here, yeah, there has been 36, 40-some employees in this program. A lot of them are providing the other portion of that. But on the GA portion, even just in my conversation I had with Mr. Dye yesterday, he has two people dedicated to work on a backlog of 1,200. 1,200. And then leaves the other four then to work on new applications as they come in. As Mr. Starr, my Chair, noted here, is that people are going without the benefits. The backlog was from July of last year. It's going to continue if you don't have the staffing levels there for those that are applying now. My members are getting burned out. They have to see these clients face to face. And if they tell them that a part of your application is not completed, they get denied, and they get angry. That 300 and something dollars may not mean a lot to you all, or to many in this room. But for someone that has nothing, that's the world for them. That puts shelter over their head for a night or so in a hotel, or on a sofa of their brother-in-law's garage to help pay some of those bills. Funding needs to happen. I was told that this board, this county, didn't put the funding there for, to make it happen. That needs to happen. And as we're entering into our contract negotiations and get deep in there, the county has come to offer a 1% to 4% raise because that's what they offered the attorneys who make almost triple what my members make, is now you're adding insult to injury. Change needs to happen. And just one note, this is not North Korea, because if it was North Korea, I'd already be arrested. So I appreciate you keeping democracy up. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Jones.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Actually, if this was North Korea, Mr. Serna would be arrested. I, just, just, Mr. Villanueva, as we talk about this issue, we work through it, and I know it takes some time. Do you think that, maybe it's Ethan, but do you think that we'll have enough data in place, we're in January now, for the next budget, to see if it's, it is required to make an augmentation, and whether or not the staffing level with the new policies is adequate?
Yes, I believe we have enough time to make those changes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm Jessica Jones. I'm a 23-year county employee working for the Department of Human Assistance. I'm one of those GA workers who is now being transferred. I'm one of those GA workers who's now being involuntarily transferred out of the program into Medi-Cal, CalFresh. Yes, we do, our, we're multi-program, so we do all three programs. But predominantly, my program has always been general assistance. I do intakes, so I see the clients every day. We see the people in the lobby. We see how they're impacted. We work overtime every day, less than 30 of us on a day because staff are burnt out, so they don't come to work because it's a hard job to do, to work with the most homelessness and mentally challenged people. Our lobbies stay impacted. Our WOD queues stay impacted till after 5:00 PM. We're working till 8:00 at night, two nights a week overtime, and Saturdays face-to-face all day. And I'm one of those workers who stay and do that. And there's only about maybe five to six of us that do that on a regular basis to help our public. Our backlog is backlogged past, I would say, maybe September, October. We have pending lists. So those six workers who are now going to do it, two of them backup workers, four of them will be, three of them will be intake, one of them will be a worker of the day to public, to service the lobby all day with one worker of the day. It's not going to happen. It's not going to work. It's going to be too hard on that person. It's going to be too hard on those three because not only are you doing GA intakes, even with a streamlined program, that you're not counting any property resources. You're taking away the things that can now, everyone will be eligible to GA and applying because it's, it's a public program now. So not just the homeless people are applying, but everybody who's in between jobs are applying as well. So you have three workers to do that, and less than 30 of us, about 30 of us can't even handle it now. I would like to know why our jobs are being taken from us like that, and, and, and we're not servicing our public like we should be. That's it.
Thank you.
Keisha Raven?
While Ms. Raven is coming down, we have a comment, or question from Supervisor Rodriguez.
I do, thank you, Chair Serna. I have a question about the 1,200 back-
I have a question about the 1,200 backlog. What is the time in motion for one, for one of those? Is it, is it 1,200, it's 1,200 individuals, correct? And so what is the time in motion for, per visit? Or per person? And that will give us an anticipation of when this backlog will be completed, or are we looking at an additional several months to get caught up?
Good morning, Ethan Die, again, Director for Department of Human Assistance. So the 12, the, an intake for all three programs is roughly an hour, and then if we need information from you, then it can be, the case can pend until you get us information. So, for example, let's say, I'm homeless, I come in and apply today, and I don't have my, I don't have my birth certificate, and we're not able to match you through another system. That case will pend for up to 30 days or more, waiting on me to submit that birth certificate. The GA program is definitely intake-heavy, and it's been intake-forward for staff for as long as I've been in the department, which is around almost 20 years now. And so, processing the backlog or, has been less of a priority, getting to customers who are dropping off paperwork, huge challenge. Last October, or October, a year and a half ago, we changed systems, and it is much more difficult now in the new system for us to do our work. And I absolutely agree with the workers, it is taking longer, there is no doubt. So how long will it take to affect those 1,200? We are expecting to be able to do those 1,200 if we get some policy changes by the end of this, by the end of this fiscal year, so we can start looking at, did the new policy change what we anticipated? So I know what to bring back to Mr. Villanueva and Ms. Katari on, what are the true needs with all these new changes?
And just to be clear, so if somebody is homeless, they, and they need a birth certificate, they have to go through the process to get a birth certificate, do they have the ability to upload electronically, or is it all manual, and you go into the office to provide data?
Our, the eligibility rules allow you to either come in, you can call us if it's something we can take over the phone. If it was an ID, yes, you can do it in the system. When you upload it into the system, it goes into a task queue when it comes in. So if there are 4,000 tasks ahead of you, then we have to process 4,000 and get to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Keisha Raven, and I am a 24-year county employee. I have been doing general assistance for about the last 19 and a half years. I just want to speak to the changes. This change down to six people is very inadequate. I concur with everything that James Starr said, Ted, Samara, and Jessica Jones. We are the ones that are doing the job every day in the trenches. I disagree with the fact that our GA cases are at like a 5% or whatever Mr. Die stated. Every case that I touch is GA, it has a general assistance component attached to it. There are very rare cases where we have the CalFresh that is already approved. Medi-Cal was attached to general assistance probably about maybe 10 years ago, when the CMISP program went away. So those programs sometimes come to us in a pending status as well, where we have to approve it, because they made up, with everyone that's approved for general assistance, has to have Medi-Cal. I said all that to say is that, again, we started off with about 40 people, it decreased tremendously, and now to go down to six people is very inadequate. We cannot even keep up with the cases that we have with the 30 people. We do have pending cases that are as far as October. Some of them I have seen as of late had a pending case as of July. We are booked out to June, I was told today, and not May. It is just not going to be doable. And I just agree with everything that my counterpart stated in regards to the inadequacies of it being down, cut down to six people. We are not going to be able to service the greater Sacramento County with those numbers. We see people every day, they come in, they are very disgruntled, even with the wait time that we have at this point. It's, it's just not going to be doable. Thank you for your time.
Nicole Gorman.
Hello, my name's Nicole Gorman. I have been with the county for 24, 24, 23 years. This is the first time I've addressed the Board of Supervisors. This process that they're talking about, I'm one of the workers that volunteered to stay. They, stay in the GA program. The processes that they're talking about to say streamline are not streamlining the process. These, they're still going to have pending cases. These clients still have things that they have to do, requirements that are, even with the streamlined process, that are required. So they still have to come back. So the pending cases are not being addressed in a timely manner, because we don't have enough staff. With six people, we have two people, one is me, one is another worker, who are to address the quote-unquote backlog, the 1,200 that are sitting there waiting for approval. If they pull us to do intakes, which they, they are doing, we don't have time, we have, we can't process any of the backlog. So all we're doing is intakes. Then you have those four workers who are doing the actual GA program, one of them is WOD, that WOD person has to see, when it was normally six to eight workers seeing all those GA clients that came into the office, it's down to one worker having to see those people. That one worker is now getting cussed out, that now one worker is being threatened because the clients are coming in, they've been waiting since August, they've been waiting since July, and now they're saying, oh, you have to wait, or we don't have enough staff to do it. Our workers are the ones that are having to deal with the brunt of that. And it's, the processes that they have in place are not effective, and we need more employees to do the program. It's not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Woolley.
And Ms. Woolley is our final speaker on consent this morning.
Good morning, again. I just am pleased to be here to listen to all the discussion on this topic. When it was introduced, I just had a question, it was one of the qualifications to be on the government assistance, is to provide citizenship. And my question to you and to our county staff is, what are the specific requirements for verifying citizenship for this program? Do we have to provide a birth certificate? Do we just certify under penalty of perjury? What are the actual specific requirements to receive these benefits? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woolley. I would suggest that you get a business card from Mr. Die, and I'm sure he or his staff could help answer your inquiries. All right. That concludes our speakers, Madam Clerk, on consent, correct?
That is correct, Chair.
All right, then we will now...
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to item three of our, or section three of our agenda, presentations.
Item number 38 is a presentation of service award recognizing Sarah Hood for 25 years of service with Sacramento County.
Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the board. My name is Melissa Chavez, I'm the Chief of Admin and Fiscal Services for Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. It is my distinct honor today to recognize Sarah Hood for her remarkable 25 years of service to Sacramento County. Sarah began her career on November 8, 1999, as an account clerk, too, in the Finance Department. Over the years, she has worked in several departments, steadily advancing her career while playing an integral role in county operations, including things such as accounts payable, vendor management, grant claiming, Medi-Cal billing, and cost allocations. Her extensive expertise has directly supported critical services that benefit our community. Sarah's passion for learning and growth is evident as she earned her first bachelor's degree in liberal arts in 2003, followed by her second degree in accounting in 2015, and ultimately, her Masters of Business Administration in 2016. These achievements have strengthened her contributions and reflect her unwavering dedication to excellence. In 2018, Sarah joined our department, DCFAS, where her skills in accounting, contracted provider payments, and grant claiming have been indispensable. Her commitment to the department's mission and her meticulous attention to detail have had a lasting impact on our work. But Sarah's contributions extend far beyond her professional role. Her deep commitment to service is exemplified by her extensive volunteer work, including her participation in our Gifts from the Heart program. As part of this program, Sarah and her family have purchased, organized, wrapped, and delivered gifts to seniors and families during the holiday season, ensuring they experience joy and feel valued. She dedicates her time and energy to making a tangible difference in the lives of those served by Gifts from the Heart. Sarah has also recently joined the Emergency Operations Center, where she's learning to lend her support during times of crisis to aid those affected. Her work through her church further demonstrates her dedication to helping others and fostering a sense of unity and compassion within her community. In her personal time, Sarah enjoys playing music, crafting, reading, and immersing herself in learning about other cultures and languages, enriching her understanding of the world. On behalf of the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, I want to express our deepest gratitude to Sarah for her extraordinary dedication, both professionally and personally. Her decades of service, coupled with her generous spirit, have truly made Sacramento County a better place. Please join me in congratulating Sarah on this well-deserved honor.
Thank you, Sarah, for your 25 years of service to Sacramento County. The podium is yours if you'd like to say a few words.
Hadn't heard anything to say, but thank you all.
All right, very good, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 39. It's a presentation of resolution recognizing Lyle Jones upon the occasion of her retirement from the Crocker Art Museum.
Colleagues and members of the public, it's my distinct honor and privilege this morning to present this resolution honoring Lyle A. Jones upon the occasion of her retirement, serving as the museum director for the Crocker Art Museum that we all know and love here in Sacramento. I think all of us have a very, very fond affiliation with, with the Crocker. It is one of our premier cultural destinations here in Sacramento County. I'm a member, I hope many of you are also members of the Crocker, and take advantage of their, their standing exhibits and their visiting exhibits. But it certainly is one of those places that enriches not just us here, as in my case, and others, native Sacramentans who grew up with the Crocker, but it's a destination that quite frankly draws people from across the region, across the state, and even the nation. So I'm not going to read all the wherethas, but what I'd like to do before giving the microphone to Lyle this morning, is recite a quote that one of my staff members, Lisa Navo, my Chief of Staff, found, and I know Lisa is a big fan of the, the Crocker and of Lyle, as I, as am I, but this is a fairly powerful quote that I think really sums up who she is and why she, she needs to be honored and recognized today for her service to us as the museum director for the Crocker. She says, "The power of museums lies in their ability to inspire and encourage a collective understanding of our shared humanity. Within museum walls, visitors encounter the beautiful, the challenging, the astonishing, and the perplexing. And through the power of observation, reflection, and dialogue, we forge deeper connections with ourselves, each other, and the world around us." I cannot agree more with those powerful words. And again, I want to congratulate Lyle on behalf of the entire Board of Supervisors in Sacramento County for your dedication and service over these years, being the leader of our Crocker Art Museum. Thank you.
Very quickly, I also like to say that the Crocker brings people together and connects them in unexpected ways with art, ideas, each other, and the world around them. And I think particularly in today's times, that's an important statement. I'm very honored to have worked at the Crocker for 25 years. I'm delighted to retire and leave it in the hands of someone that will take the institution to even a greater place. And I'd like to thank all of you at the county for your great support of the museum over those years. It's very much appreciated by everyone we serve. Thank you.
Speaking of, speaking of all of us, why don't we all from the board come down and take a photo with Lyle? She will oblige us. We'll go take a look in the pit.
and contributions to the Elk Grove community.
Before I get into commending Sophia, I'd like to welcome back to the county, former Chief of Staff for District Five, Pat Brazil.
Good to see you, Pat.
So Sophia has served the Elk Grove community for almost 29 years. She was elected to the then Elk Grove Community Services District in 1996, now obviously Kasuma's Community Services District. She was the first woman city council member upon Elk Grove's incorporation in 2000. She was the first woman mayor in 2004, and then served in that role in 2010. And nearly a quarter century ago, she appointed a then-young man to the very first Elk Grove Planning Commission. And so you all have heard a blame for the fact impartially of why I was sitting up there with you. I won't go into reading everything, but I will say that she has been a staunch supporter of our veterans, and I would like to thank her husband, Lee Sherman, for his service to the United States Marine Corps. And she was actively involved in multiple local and national organizations, including being a district governor of Optimist International, sitting on the Kasuma's College Foundation, a member of the Sacramento Chaplaincy Law Enforcement, Sacramento Fire Advisory. She was appointed by Governor Schwarzenegger to the California State Parks and Recreation Commission. And she's received numerous awards and honors for exemplary community service in Elk Grove and beyond, including being named the 2003 Woman of the Year by Senator Rico Aller, the 2010 Elk Grove Elks Lodge Citizen of the Year, YMCA's 1997 Woman of Distinction, and the 1999 Elk Grove Citizen of the Year. And so I'd like to conclude by reading the last couple paragraphs here, whereas it is Sophia's hope that her legacy of compassion and leadership, made possible through the love and support of her husband of 56 years, Leland Sherman, will continue to inspire others. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby congratulate and commend Sophia Sherman on her many years of dedication and service to the people of Elk Grove, and her exceptional contributions to the betterment of the community, and further offers best wishes to the entire Sherman family for good health, much happiness, and many blessings in all the years to come. Felicidades y gracias.
Just in case, I'm a little short here. Just a couple of words, there's one thing that Pat left out, excuse me, Supervisor Pat Hume. I've known him since he was a little guy. Anyway, the one thing that I'm really proud that I have done, that I was appointed to this board, was by Toby Johnson way back when. you know, it was an amazing experience to watch somebody who was there for all the right reasons, who cared about the mission, who cared about, more importantly, the clients, the kids. And you say you left your heart there, your heart will always be there. We appreciate everything you've done. I know that you've improved the lives of many kids, many of whom we've seen even become SETA employees, who started out as kids in the classroom, and you were there every step of the way. And your conscience will be missed, and the fact that we're now missing our grandmother, our great-grandmother for SETA, but you'll always be there in spirit and heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Sophia. And I did not have the privilege of serving with you on SETA for nearly as long as Supervisor Kennedy, but it was a delight to see your compassion, your passion for SETA and its mission, and everybody that it serves. And if I had known you were someone of such renown, I would have been much more reverential towards you on the SETA board, means I want you to know that. But you certainly leave big shoes for us to fill on the SETA board as well, for that public member, so thank you for your service and congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Thank you. Sophia, I am a big community person, and when I look at communities that are thriving and that are excelling, like Elk Grove, I look at people like you who have had a huge part of that, and so I thank you. And you are an inspiration to, for individuals who want to serve their community and see the amazing things that a community can become, so just want to say congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then I'll conclude. Sophia, I've had the privilege of knowing you for over a couple decades, and my first real kind of introduction to the then-new city hall, if you will, of Elk Grove was working side by side with the likes of Mike Winn and others when we were trying to plan and entitle the Laguna Ridge Master Plan. And that was also when I first met my now colleague Supervisor Hume, when he was on the planning commission. The one thing I want to just add to the appropriate comments here about your drive and your interest in public services, I really took note after you came off the council. I think you didn't skip a beat in terms of how you could then shift and contribute, continue to contribute to your community in other ways. And I'm convinced there are two types of people, those that want to be in public office, want to be elected, and those that need to be elected in terms of the fact that they believe wholeheartedly that the community needs what you have to offer. And I think you're certainly of the latter variety, and certainly a model for others that hope and strive to serve locally and regionally. I'm glad you concluded your remarks by making sure that we're doing our due diligence when we appoint people. I think those comments are very well taken. So again, thank you for all of your contributions over the decades, and thank you Supervisor Hume for appropriately recognizing.
Thank you. I have one more thing to say.
Sure.
Because I know once we'll take a picture, then we just separate. I just want to thank you very much, and all I want to say is God bless you. Que Dios los bendiga todos ahora.
Gracias. Yeah, all right.
We did not, Chair. The next item is number 41. It is Juvenile Justice Commission and Delinquency Prevention Commission Presentation.
Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the board. We thank you for the opportunity to provide this presentation today regarding the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission. My name is Jane Clark, and I'm the current chair of the commission. I've been privileged to be a commissioner for the past 19 years. My background includes, also includes, having been an educator for 36 years, as well as participating as a member of the State SARB School Attendance Review Board for the State of California. I also serve as a member of, on the Sacramento County Children's Services Oversight Committee. I currently reside in Supervisor Rodriguez's district. So I'd like to introduce my fellow commissioner and our second vice chair, Dennis Duley.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Dennis Duley. I'm a semi-retired state parole officer, served for the California Youth Authority for 30 years. I'm also a 20-plus-year commissioner with the Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission. And I say semi-retired because I'm also an athletic coach for El Camino High School. I'm currently the head JV coach for baseball, and I also served as a football coach for the El Camino.
Oevo.
Yes, thank you. And I'm still currently a substitute teacher at El Camino High School.
And you're semi-retired?
Yes.
In our presentation, we'd like to go over the background and purpose of our commission, the membership, the responsibilities of our commissioners, and the activities that we currently have put in place.
The Juvenile Justice Commission is established pursuant to the Welfare and Institutions Code Sections 225 through 231. This code requires each county or region to have a juvenile justice commission that has a duty to inquire into the administration of juvenile court law in the county through inspections of all publicly administered juvenile justice institutions in the county in which the preceding calendar year was used for confinement of any minor for more than 24 hours. The Delinquency Prevention Commission serves the county Board of Supervisors pursuant to the Welfare and Institutions Code Section 232 through 236. On March 10th of 1969, the board established the Delinquency Prevention Commission by ordinance, and that was under County Code 2.26, to coordinate on a countywide basis the work of its governmental and non-governmental organizations engaged in activities that were designed to prevent juvenile delinquency.
Our membership includes, for the Juvenile Justice Commission, members are appointed by the presiding judge of Superior Court with concurrence of the presiding judge of juvenile court. Commissioners include 7 to 15 community volunteers who serve a four-year term. Sacramento Superior Court provides JJC information on its website. Since its establishment in 1969, the Delinquency Prevention Commission has operated with JJC members, also serving as DPC members. The Sacramento County probation provides DPC information on its website.
The scope and responsibility of the Juvenile Justice Commission is, has, we have monthly meetings that are not open to the public, but we dare to inquire into the administration of the juvenile court law in the county. Welfare and Institutions Code indicates that a juvenile justice commission shall annually inspect any jail or lockup within the county which in the preceding calendar year was used for confinement for more than 24 hours of any minor. A juvenile justice commission may inquire into the operation of any group home that serves wards or dependent children of the juvenile court and is located in the county or region that the commission serves. The commission may review the safety and well-being of wards or dependent children placed in these group homes and the program and services provided in relation to the home's published program statement. Annual inspections include the youth detention facility, also known as WIDF, and local law enforcement holding facilities in which the juvenile was securely detained during the prior year. The Board of State and Community Corrections provided training on commissioners' requirements until June of 2024, and given the realignment law, the future trainings will be provided by the new Office of Youth and Community Restoration.
The scope of responsibility of the Delinquency Prevention Commission. The Delinquency Prevention Commission, or DPC, has quarterly meetings at the juvenile courthouse, which are open to the public pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Code Sections 54950, to fulfill its statutory duty to coordinate on a countywide basis the work of governmental and non-governmental organizations engaged in activities designed to prevent juvenile delinquency. Welfare Institution Codes indicate duties can be fulfilled through cooperation or participation from the juvenile court and the probation department. The juvenile court and probation department of any county may cooperate with or participate in the work of any such councils or committees for the purpose of preventing or decreasing juvenile delinquency, including the improving of recreational health or other conditions in the community affecting juvenile welfare.
Our activities include, but are not limited to, with regard to the Juvenile Justice Commission, in 2324, we inspected the youth detention facility, which included review and inspection of the Valley Oaks Youth Academy, also known as VOYA, established by Senate Bill 823, which is the juvenile justice realignment legislation. And also in 2324, inspection of police departments where youth were securely detained pursuant to Welfare and Institutions Code and Title 15, which includes the Cal Expo PD, the Citrus Heights PD, Elk Grove PD, and the Folsom PD. Also in 2023, inspections of short-term residential treatment programs, which include the Sacramento Children's Home and the Sacramento Children's Receiving Home. With regard to the Delinquency Prevention Commission, we set delinquency prevention priorities and goals aligned with duties, develop meeting agendas, and report on activities and achievements, request legislative updates from the Superior Court and probation regarding laws pertaining to youth, and do outreach to juvenile justice, education, and community-based agencies, as well as others serving youth in Sacramento County for information on juvenile justice and delinquency prevention programs and services.
Activities, additional activities that the commission have conducted. We started in 2006 through private and outside donations and scholarship program for youth who've been in delinquency and/or dependency programs. Scholarships are awarded to youth who are pursuing more training and/or education after high school completion. And as you can see from the photo, we have four commissioners, excuse me, who were able to attend one of our recent scholarship presentations. Our commissioners also attend the graduations for youth at El Centro, which is the high school located at the youth detention facility, and the Lake Tahoe Community College graduates, also for youth who are detained at the youth detention facility.
And our next steps are committed, our commissioners are committed to ongoing work to ensure that the appropriate alignment with law and to fulfill the purpose and duties of the Juvenile Justice Commission and the Delinquency Prevention Commission.
We'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity for our presentation, and I'd like to point out, we have additional commissioners here in the audience that are here to support the presentation today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, not just for the presentation, but for the time and energy you put into this important work. It's not lost on us. We, on the Board of Supervisors, certainly rely on people such as yourselves to volunteer for this important work, and we appreciate these updates as we get them manually or otherwise, and I think you did a very thorough job. So thank you again to everyone, including the folks in back of you. I'd look to my colleagues to see if there are any questions or comments. I don't see any. And then I would ask our clerk, do we have anyone signed up to address the board on this presentation?
We do not.
All right, very good. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item number 42 is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for the Sierra Gardens Subdivision APN 066007009.
Hi. Good morning, members of the board. Dawn Pimentel with County Engineering. The Sierra Gardens subdivision is located on the south side of Florin Road, approximately 1,400 feet west of Bradshaw Road, and consists of 159 single-family lots, a park parcel, an open space parcel, a drainage basin parcel, and miscellaneous landscape parcels associated with the site improvements. The project was approved with a community plan amendment rezoned-
like to point out, we have additional commissioners here in the audience that are here to support the presentation today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, not just for the presentation, but for the time and energy you put into this important work. It's not lost on us. We, on the Board of Supervisors, certainly rely on people such as yourselves to volunteer for this important work, and we appreciate these updates as we get them manually or otherwise, and I think you did a very thorough job. So, thank you again to everyone, including the folks in back of you. I'd look to my colleagues to see if there are any questions or comments. I don't see any. And then I would ask our clerk, do we have anyone signed up to address the board on this presentation?
We do not.
All right, very good. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item number 42 is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for the Sierra Gardens Subdivision, APN 0660070009.
Hi. Good morning, members of the Board. Don Pimentel with County Engineering. The Sierra Gardens subdivision is located on the south side of Florin Road, approximately 1,400 feet west of Bradshaw Road, and consists of 159 single-family lots, a park parcel, an open space parcel, a drainage basin parcel, and miscellaneous landscape parcels associated with the site improvements. The project was approved with a community plan amendment, rezone, subdivision tentative map, and design review on March 26, 2024. In response to the project's condition of approval required prior to filing a final map, the project proponents submitted an application requesting the initiation of the benefit category change process. In response to that request, a ballot and notice was mailed to the property owner on December 13, 2024. Currently, the project's single parcel is in the safety light only category and is assessed $2.56 annually. After the benefit category change to the enhanced street and safety categories, the increased annual service charge will be approximately $10,555.94 for the total of 161 residential lots, the open space parcel and drainage parcel, which are both considered residential, and then 484 feet of public frontage for the park parcel, which is considered non-residential. If there are no questions from the Board, we recommend the Board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimonies, any objections and protests, and then close the public hearing and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and invite anyone in our gallery to address the Board if they so choose. Madam Clerk, I suspect we don't have any speaker slips, so I'll close the public hearing and ask you to tabulate.
We receive one ballot from HBT Sierra Gardens LLC, parcel number 0660070009, site address Florin Road, Sacramento, California, and it is in favor of the proposed change to the benefit categories.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Since there are no majority protests, we request the Board adopt the attached resolution to confirm the levy of increased annual service charges for the Sierra Gardens subdivision. And I would like to read in the recordings of the fill-in for the resolution. In Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the Board received zero written protests. In Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of the benefit category, and 0% were in opposition to change the benefit category.
I'd like to move adoption of the resolution.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Supervisor Hume and seconded by Supervisor Rodriguez. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 43 is a public hearing on proposed general vacation of Sampson-Dewey Alley between Brooklyn Avenue and Iowa Avenue in the South Sacramento community and reservation of certain public utility and private easements for continued access under Streets and Highways Code, Section 8320. There is an environmental determination and categorical exemption.
Good morning.
Good morning. May please have access to the over. Thank you. So, good morning, Chairman Serna and members of the Board. My name is Jody Hashagami Contreras with the Department of Community Development. The item before you is a request for the general vacation of the area identified in the overhead exhibit as the Sampson-Dewey Right-of-Way in the South Sacramento community and the reservation of the underlying public utility and private easements. The Sampson-Dewey Alley provides secondary access to the abutting properties that take primary access of Sampson Boulevard and Dewey Boulevard between Iowa Avenue to the north and Brooklyn Avenue to the south. Because the alley is used only for secondary access by the abutting property owners, it is not necessary for present or prospective public use, and may be vacated pursuant to the procedure set forth in the Streets and Highway Code, Section 8320 and following. In 2021, to address the illegal dumping and homeless encampment issues along the alley, the Board endorsed a two-part approach. First was a temporary closure of the Sampson-Dewey Alley pursuant to Vehicle Code, Section 21101.4, which was executed on October 20, 2021, with the adoption of Resolution 20210693, and then further extended on January 23, 2024 via Resolution Number 2024-0062. Secondly was a vacation of the alley per the Streets and Highway Code, Section 8300 and following, which brings us here today. Approval of the general vacation would relinquish the right-of-way along the Sampson-Dewey Alley. Additionally, the existing public utility and private easements would be reserved and accepted from the vacation. The retention of the private easement would allow the abutting property owners continued access rights along the vacated alley. Letters are on file from the Sacramento Area Sewer District, the Departments of Planning and Environmental Review, Transportation, Water Resources, and Applicable Utility Purveyors, indicating that these departments have reviewed and do not object to the proposed vacation. Therefore, staff recommends that the Board recognize the exempt status of the general vacation and adopt the attached resolution. But before I conclude, as I am simply tasked with presenting this item to the Board today, I would like to take this time to acknowledge the county staff members that put forth substantial effort into this endeavor. Lupe Rodriguez and Lou Lee from the Department of Transportation, Javier Zetigosa and John Scarpa from the Department of Community Development, Katrina Nelson representing our county council, various staff members from the Department of Waste Management and Recycling, county retirees Anthony Santiago and Robert Davison, and of course Supervisor Kennedy and his staff. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed to speak on this matter?
We do not.
All right. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Just by the list of people that you were thanking shows the degree of difficulty it is to get something like this done. But all of those people that you named, and I'm sure there were others, I thank, you know, profusely, District 2 thanks you, that area thanks you. This was a nightmare of an alley as far as illegal dumping, camping, fires being lit, you name it. We came up with this idea many years ago, thought it was going to be something that was a no-brainer and easy. The community was completely behind it. We had no opposition, but because of state regulations, it took as long as it did because we had to go through every step, which, you know, my office was involved with, but not bird dogging all along the way. You were, I appreciate it, our neighbors appreciate it, thank you for your efforts. This is, I can't believe this is the first one in Sacramento County, but we're glad it's happening. Thank you.
All right.
I move approval, Mr. Chair, as does our code enforcement chief, by the way.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Supervisor Desmond and seconded by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Item number 44 is to introduce ordinances adding Sacramento County Code Title 4, Chapter 4.55 related to sidewalk vending, adding Title 6, Chapter 6.05 related to compact mobile food operators, amending Title 9, Chapter 9.36 related to park regulations, repealing Title 4, Chapter 4.54, Article 1, Sections 4.54, 000 to 4.54.2020, related to the regulations of street businesses. And this is a lawful reading and continue to February 4, 2025 for adoption, but I do want to just note that we are approving a resolution today amending the business license fee structure for sidewalk business licenses.
Very good, thank you. Good morning.
All right. Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the Board. Chad Rendy, Finance Director, to talk through this item. Also with me is-
Chad, real quick, sorry to interrupt. Our county council would like to say a few words.
Sorry, I need to go back to the prior item. We were, needed to open a public hearing, which we didn't do.
Okay.
Thank you for, Katrina, for letting me know.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please read the prior item?
Yes, it's, item number 43 is a public hearing on proposed general vacation of Sampson-Dewey Alley between Brooklyn Avenue and Iowa Avenue in the South Sacramento community and reservation of certain public utility and private easements for continued access under Streets and Highways Code, Section 8320, and an environmental determination categorical exemption.
All right. Despite asking and clarifying with the clerk that there were no public speakers, I will open the public hearing and close the public hearing, and now we do have to revote?
Yeah, revote, please.
Okay.
Move the item?
Moved by Supervisor Kennedy this time and seconded by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to reread item 44, or?
No, we're good. Chad, pick up where you left off, please.
All right. Chad Rendy, Director of Finance, also with me, Jania Monasterio from Environmental Management, and Liz Bellis, Park and, our Director of Regional Parks. So, we'll present briefly on sidewalk vending regulations that we're proposing, and we'll give you a little bit of the purpose, talk about the three different pieces of the ordinance, one affecting business licensing, one affecting, which affects the unincorporated area, one affecting environmental management, which is countywide, and then one affecting our regional parks. We'll talk a little bit about our proposed approach for educating the sidewalk vending community, as well as what enforcement powers will have, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions at the end today, and we've also got representatives from our code enforcement and our county council, depending on where questions might go. As you see with me, this was a collaborative effort to get this all before you today, and leading up to today's session, we have done robust public outreach with our business community, with our regional parks community, and with the Sacramento Environmental Commission. And so, in brief, sidewalk vending is any vendor who's selling food or merchandise from a cart, a stand, a display, it could be a pedal-driven cart, wagon showcase, really anything non-motorized that is upon the public sidewalk. And we do say public sidewalk because that's an important distinction. This is in the public right-of-way. This is not activities that are occurring on private property that would go through our general business licensing process. Sidewalk vending can be either merchandise or food, and so a sidewalk vendor would need to get licensed with us, and if they were selling food, they would also need to pursue a health permit through environmental management.
Chad, sorry, real quick. So, how, and I'm looking at county councils as well on this, how important is the definition of sidewalk for its relevance to what we're being asked to consider, especially since there are a number of areas in the unincorporated county where we don't have sidewalks, we have distinguished road shoulders, and I don't know, there probably isn't that much vending that goes on on road shoulders, but do we kind of cover that in what's being proposed?
It includes the public right-of-way, so it is encompassed in what's proposed here. Obviously, if those road shoulders have large slopes, those may not be an area that we'll talk about later of a safe area to do vending.
Okay, thank you.
So, the purpose is to create a clear path for those that want to engage in sidewalk vending, to get licensed and to do it in a safe and legal manner. This comes before you as there are state laws, starting back in 2018, for the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act that essentially requires local agencies to allow for sidewalk vending. This is not an activity that we can ban. We can have some limited regulation on it within the confines of what the state allows for health, safety, and welfare purposes. We've got the three pieces before you here today, and on the business licensing piece, cities will need to have their own business licensing ordinances to regulate sidewalk vending, whereas environmental management will manage the food component on a countywide basis. So, there's two different types of sidewalk vending that are specified in state law and in our ordinance. One is a stationary sidewalk vendor, that is someone who sets up regularly at the same location, so they have a fixed location of business that they're going to plan to vend from, that they identify to us. The others are roaming vendor, which you might envision a push cart or a bicycle cart, where they are on the move, making sale transactions from place to place, and so they wouldn't be in a fixed location, and they would roam from place to place, but stop to complete those transactions.
What happens if I have a wheeled cart and I just go to the same place every time? So, obviously, if I'm wheeled, that means that I'm mobile.
We would hope that they would update their registration with us to indicate that they have changed to vend from a fixed location, just so we have knowledge of that, but that would be the only additional requirement.
Okay, so that's a bit of a leap of faith, right?
Yes. Thanks. We are with your actions today, repealing an old ordinance that's a few decades old that did prohibit all forms of street vending, and so to conform with state law, we are asking you to remove Chapter 4, Section 54. We are adding a new chapter that contains the business licensing ordinance. We are proposing a one-year license that would conform with the duration of the health permit. Those vendors that would want to get licensed, they would register using their home or their mailing address, and if they're a fixed vendor, they would identify where they plan to vend. Vendors can either reside in the county or outside the county, it's a matter of them planning to vend within the unincorporated Sacramento County. And then there are a number of different health and welfare restrictions that we'll talk about in a minute. Sidewalk vendors are required to obtain the license prior to starting the vending activity. We are proposing a fee to cover the cost of just the license issuance component, because there are administrative penalties that come with the enforcement side at an amount of $61, which is just the staff time to process and issue that license. We will talk about the end of the presentation in our enforcement, the administrative fines that we are allowed to charge, those are all specified by state law, and if a licensed business does have multiple violations, we do have the ability to suspend or revoke their violation, their license if that is warranted, based off the number of violations in a 12-month period. So, within sidewalk vending, we do have the ability to find that there are certain health and welfare and safety standards that we believe are necessary to regulate the activity. These were crafted working closely with our county council, and without these, we would not have the ability to enforce potentially against these activities. So, they're not supposed to stop the flow of traffic of either pedestrians or other types of vehicles or bicycles. There are a lot of standards related to ADA that they need comply with. They're not to locate within the vicinity of a traffic-controlled area, a construction zone that might already have traffic concerns. They shouldn't be blocking visibility for people to either cross intersections or for vehicles to travel. We are having them not have additional lights, horns, or music as part of their vending activity, that would be ancillary to the vending itself. They're not required, they're not allowed to vend restricted products, including but not limited to alcohol, lottery tickets, cannabis, tobacco, cigarettes, weapons, things of that nature. They are not able to set up near a special event or a farmer's market where we already have licensed vending activities that are regulated, associated with those events. Sidewalk vendors are also not allowed to set up freestanding signs, set up additional tables, chairs, or other structures that expand out, and any other activities that might impede the flow of traffic that would be a concern.
Would this include, Chad, shade umbrellas?
Apologies, sir. You said umbrellas?
Shade umbrellas.
We have not added-
Of the large variety, the-
Yeah, we have not added regulations specifically around shade umbrellas. It was really tables, chairs, and other structures, so we'd have to look at that individual establishment, and are they using that for personal shade, or is that something they're expanding to provide, you know, trying to limit seating areas or expansion of, outside of the immediate vending area?
I mean, it sounds to me like, from what you just said, though, it might, shade umbrellas might be captured in terms of just visible obstructions for vehicular traffic movement, and-
Yes.
I would imagine also signage for brick and mortar.
So, if the shade umbrella, you're right, is, or signage is creating a visible obstruction, that would be of a concern, and that would be something we'd want to address.
Thank you.
Sidewalk vendings are required to provide a trash receptacle, to maintain appropriate sanitary conditions around their location of vending, comply with any necessary food or health regulations. They're also required to be in attendance during the times that they're open for vending, make sure that their cart or their vending stand has someone that is working at all times. They are not allowed to lock that up to public infrastructure or other poles, signs, trees, or other objects. They need to make sure that the waste generated is properly disposed by their business. They're only allowed to operate during the same time that other business activity is occurring in that area, and those carts are supposed to be self-contained, to limit that expansion or connection to other sources of water, gas, electricity would be prohibited.
Excuse me, Chad. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chad, and thank you, staff. I know you've done a lot of work on this, certainly appreciate it. Certainly appreciate it. With the time similar to the hours of operation in the neighborhood, explain that to me a little bit, and how you're going to go about determining that.
I think that's a challenge, that we'll have to look at those business corridors, and what are the traditional hours that the commercial establishments along those corridors are open. And so that is a requirement in state law. We can, we can only confine it to hours that there is regular business activity. And so we would have to look at, are the businesses generally open during those hours of operation? So if the business hours in the area, you know, maybe they, those, it's a office park that traditionally closes maybe 5:00 or 6:00 p.m. We wouldn't expect a sidewalk vending entity to set up there when there's no other business activity, you know, be operating late into the evenings.
So what if, Chad, I know this is hypothetical, of course, but if all the other businesses are closed, including the restaurants, but there's one bar, say, along Madison Avenue or whatever in that area that's open until 2:00 in the morning? How would you apply this in that situation? Because that is a very frequent situation.
I think we'd have to evaluate that, that situation on a case-by-case basis with county council. Does, does that one established business operating till 2:00 a.m., you know, provide allowance for a nearby sidewalk vendor to operate on the same hours?
But bottom line, this evaluation is allowed under state law. That's more, okay. And then another question is, how do you, on the, the carts are self-contained, obviously this is relating to the food vendors, I'm looking at Jania, how do you deal with propane carts that have propane? I mean, are those allowed if they have their food vendor permit and they've been inspected? How are those treated?
Excellent question. So we are looking at all of the different kinds of configurations that carts can have. Generally speaking, propane carts would not be allowed. So when they have that propane as the fuel source. And then also on this slide, gas-powered generators are not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Chad, I have a quick question. There have been some that are on the sort of the county roads that don't have businesses surrounding them. So when we look at hour, like hours of operation, how would you quantify those type of times?
I think we would have to work with county council to determine what those reasonable hours of operation are if there is not adjacent business. You know, what, what is that customer base that is frequenting this business? Obviously sidewalk vendors want to set up areas where they're going to have traffic, they're going to have population. So there's some type of activity bringing the customer there. And I think in those instances, we have to see is that, is that because it's near, you know, some type of infrastructure, a highway, a bridge, or something else that's driving the vending activity? And what would be the appropriate measure for that particular instance?
Okay.
I'm not going to go through these all in detail, but in our ordinance, we specify a number of different distancing requirements for health and safety. These are all supported by some type of law or regulations such as ADA, or such as making sure there's space from fire hydrants or fire access. And so we specify a number of distances within our ordinance to provide safety for other uses that need to occur along the sidewalk. And so at this point, I'm gonna see if there's any questions before I hand it off to Jania to talk through the environmental management piece. And obviously, I'll be right here in case there's questions at the end.
Thank you, Chad. Any further questions for Chad? Okay, thank you.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Jania Monastario. I'm the Director for Environmental Management Department. I'll be presenting the next couple of slides as it, as it relates to Chapter 6, the addition of Chapter 6.05 to Title 6 of the Sacramento County Code. And this will specifically address the requirements for compact mobile food operations, also known as CMFOs. Since the passage of the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act, SB 946, sidewalk food vendors have struggled to meet the requirements under the California Retail Food Code. The Retail Food Code was amended in 2023 to include a new mobile-type category called a compact mobile food operation, or CMFO. The ordinance before you today will align Sacramento County Code with the Retail Food Code, incorporating compact mobile food operations as a new mobile food facility. This will bring county code current with state law. A compact mobile food operation is defined as a single mobile food facility that operates from an individual or from a push cart, stand, display, pedal-driven cart, wagon, showcase, or rack, or other non-motorized conveyance. This does not include food trucks, and it does not include catering operations. Both of them have their own requirements in the code. It is important to note that the requirements under Chapters 6.05 apply to both the unincorporated and incorporated areas of the county, as EMD is responsible for food safety requirements So this is a summary of the requirements for a compact mobile food operation, or CMFO. These operations are required to obtain a health permit from EMD to operate, to operate from an approved commissary or kitchen, to undergo an annual inspection with EMD, have limited food preparation only, as defined by the California Retail Food Code, have overhead protection, and this goes to the question about shade sources. So it is required that these operators have some sort of overhead protection, and it needs to be integral to the cart or stand or display, not things on the side. Must have water and soap available for hand washing, must have the ability to wash utensils or rotate them after four hours of use, and have adequate temperature control such as refrigeration. There is an exemption under the CMFO requirements of a display area of 25 square feet or less where only prepackaged, non-potentially hazardous food and/or whole, uncooked produce is sold. Examples of this are soda, chips, cookies, and then whole produce such as strawberries, mangoes, oranges, et cetera. The next slide will be presented by Liz Bellis for Regional Parks.
Mr. Chair?
Oh.
Through the chair, I'm sorry.
We're gonna, sorry, I'm looking away from the queue here. We'll start with Supervisor Rodriguez.
I do have one question, and it's regarding, on the environmental side, it is the hot water. Like, for most brick and mortars, if your hot water is somehow off or not working, there's a requirement to close down?
That is correct. And with CMFO operations, and this is in the California Retail Food Code, is they are, the hot water requirement was removed. And so those operators need to have water and soap available, but it doesn't have to be hot.
Okay.
And they do have a requirement for limited food prep, so it's not quite the same as a restaurant. So they have more food assembly requirements, so they're not performing or cooking the food as the same way as a restaurant would. So I think that's why there's reduction in some of those requirements, is what a restaurant would need to do.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Jania, sorry.
No, I'm good.
And, and so, obviously, those requirements for CMFO are also less than are required for a food truck as well, correct?
Yes.
In terms of food?
In some instances, yes.
In some, okay. And then, just so I'm clear for the definitions, CMFO, does that encompass both a stationary sidewalk vendor and a roaming, or only the roaming?
It's, it's all sidewalk vending. CMFOs would be any of those that I talked about with on a cart, pedal, a display, cart, rack, all of those. And that can be stationary or roaming.
Okay, great. And then, but what about, seems like there's an, you know, I hear people use the term "a pop-up kitchen." And we'll get to this at the end of the presentation, because these are more, the much larger operations we see on private property. Would that fall under any of those definitions? Or would you technically, would you treat that somewhat differently?
So for any, any vending situation, we will look at what they're vending and how they're preparing the food. So our main focus is food safety. And so each one of the instances or vending applications that come through, we will be looking at how they can meet those CMFO requirements. So some operations do have quite a bit going on, and so that's when we would work with that vendor to make sure they meet the requirements.
Okay. But there would be nothing if someone, say, is a, you know, I like to call it a pop-up kitchen, I guess, for, for, for lack of a better term, which is a pretty involved affair in a private parking lot, for instance? Would we have to treat that as a CMFO?
If they meet the requirements.
Okay, all right.
And so that's a case-by-case basis, and I, and I am aware--
And we don't see those except on private property, so we'll talk about that.
And we'll talk about private property.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I will have questions on private property issue, but specifically now, for the CMFO, like, for example, the vendor with a cart with the umbrella, and he's handing out seasonal fruits, which is very common along Franklin Boulevard and some other areas in South Sacramento, are we requiring hand-washing facilities for something like that?
If the fruit is cut, yes.
Okay.
And those are considered potentially hazardous.
So when we say that we're requiring hand, I mean, because, all right, let me go to more basic. What's a hand-washing facility?
It can be as simple as a five-gallon container that has water and then soap available and paper towels. And so it's, it's able to wash hands there on site. It can also be a sink. So there are multiple ways for hand-washing depending on the operation.
Okay. How close does it have to be to the CMFO? Meaning that, and again, we're going to get to the private property thing, but let's, you go with the same hypothetical, that that same gentleman selling fruit is doing it in a parking lot at a grocery store or some other place with the permission of the vendor, of the company, all that. And they have hand-washing facilities inside. Does it have to, I mean, is there a footage that the hand-washing facility has to be next to?
So I'm going to bring down Rolandaville Real for some of these specifics. But, and that also dovetails with access to restrooms. So I think he'll be able to answer that question.
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisor, and members of the board. Great question, Supervisor Kennedy. In terms of the hand-washing, it has to be an integral part of that CMFO.
Okay.
And the restroom has to be a certain feet away from the CMFO.
What is that footage?
200 feet.
200 feet, okay.
However, there is a, an exemption in terms of if there are two or more employees. So one person go to a restroom, say, down the gas station while another person is there to watch over the CMFO.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
All right, thank you.
Hello, Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. So SB 946 precludes a local agency from prohibiting sidewalk vending in a local agency park. I make that distinction. It does not affect state or federal parks. But we can prohibit multiple stationary vending if we have a concession agreement in place. And so what we have done, Regional Parks, has created a subcommittee with staff and representation from our Recreation and Park Commission, our American River Parkway Advisory Committee, and the Dry Creek Parkway Advisory Committee, to have a request for proposal process to establish concession agreements within regional park sites. And we also do have the ability to implement time, place, and manner restrictions for both stationary and roaming vendors. But they have to be directly related to health, safety, or welfare. So our proposed amendments make our existing language consistent with SB 946, and then adds codes, standards for sidewalk vendors. Any questions on that concept?
I have a question. So yes or no, this, this sanctions vending in the American River Parkway?
It would allow sidewalk vending in the American River Parkway, but with time, manner, and location restrictions.
What about restrictions on combustibles and ignition sources?
Those still exist.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, do our, does our existing code and the American River Parkway Plan overrule anything in this?
It does not.
It doesn't?
The, our code, we've, we've tried to make it consistent, so it is consistent with SB 946. The American River Parkway Plan does not trump over this law.
Okay, so, I'm trying to think of what, what would be the most, kind of, what would be the worst-case scenario in terms of a potential conflict with even the intent of the Parkway Plan or other codes governing, especially ignition sources and, you know, accelerants in the Parkway? What, what if I wanted to sell warm food in the, in the Parkway?
So I can--
Hot food.
So I can tell you that what we are doing is, as the committee, we've met twice already, we're looking at specific areas. We are looking at developed recreation areas only within the American River Parkway, and also looking at the other requirements, where permitting requirements that the vendors would have, i.e. being close to a restroom and/or a water source. So that is going to, by virtue of those facts, limit the areas where this vending could occur.
Would there also be restrictions on total number permitted?
So we're looking at the American River Parkway is, is divided into 19 area plans. So we're looking at each specific area plan. However, each area plan does not have a developed recreation use that would also meet these other requirements. So it's not even going to have, we're not even going to have 19 areas where vending could occur on the American River Parkway.
And then, how then can we expect that trash associated with these activities, even in these limited designated areas, would be addressed?
So there is the requirement that the vendors have to take care of the trash within their immediate vicinity, but we would also need to couple that with education programs in general with litter in the park system. We can also try to address that within our concession agreements, maybe going a little bit further than what the law says, specific to the sidewalk vending. We've done that, for example, with our concession agreements for the rafting.
And then, Liz, I assume that what we're talking about this morning, as it relates to the Parkway, is completely separate than how we handle large events in the Parkway?
Absolutely.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate these questions as well. But before you go out with an RFP with these criteria, will we have a chance to have a discussion with you about this before that goes out?
So we've developed this subcommittee with representation from the Recreation Park Commission and our two advisory bodies, so that we are, in theory, getting representation from your board because of the way that you nominate people on the committee. But I can absolutely set up briefings with the board members if desired.
Thank you. Thanks, Liz.
All right, so Jania Monastario again from EMD, and I'll be presenting the next few slides detailing the enforcement of sidewalk vending ordinance, implementation approach, and recognized limitations. Sidewalk vending enforcement mechanisms are outlined in state law, specifically in the Safe Sidewalk Vending Law or Act and the California Retail Food Code. So consequently, local governments are restricted to these enforcement mechanisms. This slide represents, or presents, the breakdown of penalties for operating without a business license, violations of the business license, and violations of the CMO, CMFO health permit. You can see that's listed here. The first part of the slide shows operating without a business license. So the monetary penalty for first violation, second violation, and third, and so on. And then violation to the business license and CMO health permit is the first, second, and each additional for business and CMFO health permit.
Before you continue, we have some questions from my colleagues here. We'll start with Supervisor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I have a lot of questions that I'm saving towards the end, but I wanted to just ask, while we're on this slide, do these violation fines, are they subject to the application waiver that's codified in state law?
Application waiver?
The waiver, the application to have the fines waived?
And the ability to pay?
Yeah.
Is that, yes, they are, they're subject to that.
Okay.
And that's both for business license and CMFO.
Okay.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
So when it comes to enforcement, in the event when code enforcement goes to a location, they see they're out of compliance in certain areas, who gets the violation?
In terms of the vendor?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So are you asking also, is, who issues a violation?
Well, so, say code enforcement, you know, gets to a location that is out of compliance in many areas. Who, if somebody gets the violation, who will, what, will it be one of the workers that's, that's behind the, that's working? Or would it be, how would that work?
Yes, so the vendor that is vending the, the, the object, whether it's merchandise or food, would be the one that would receive the violation of the citation. And so typically, those are the owners of the, of the operation. Sometimes they're, they're workers with it, but that we would try to get identification information so that we would be able to issue that citation.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Kenny?
Thank you, Chair. So this question comes as, you know, many of us represent incorporated and unincorporated areas, at least those that count. Sorry. So how do we enforce? Because I saw that six out of seven cities have their own, you know--
Because I saw that six out of seven cities have their own, you know, ordinance. But yet we, as a county, are responsible for, through our EMD, for health and safety components, regardless of where it is in the county. So how is it, just from a practical standpoint, that we enforce over all these cross jurisdictions and agencies?
That is an excellent question, and I'm going to be talking about that a little bit too in the implementation approach.
Okay, so spank the supervisor for not waiting, I appreciate that.
Not at all. But it does take a coordinated approach. And because there are multiple city jurisdictions and EMD is countywide, business license is based on the jurisdiction, unincorporated, incorporated, it does present a challenge of coordinating with all of these entities to ensure that it is fair and consistent throughout the county. So I will, I will definitely go into detail about that. In fact, I'll, we'll just jump to it right now.
Thank you.
So that is implementation approach. That we're planning on focusing on in education efforts first. The three departments that are here before you today, we're looking at providing education, extensive robust education and outreach to prospective sidewalk vendors to assist them with meeting licensing, health permit, and operating requirements. To effectively manage sidewalk vending, a coordinated approach involving multiple county departments is essential. Environmental Management, Business Licensing, Office of Economic Development, Code Enforcement, and Sheriff's Office will collaborate to ensure that sidewalk vending operations are connected legally and safely. The joint effort will include an education-first approach to help vendors understand and comply with the regulations, followed by enforcement measures where necessary. This collaboration will create a supportive environment for vendors while maintaining public health and safety standards. And so those are the collaboration and that approach with the various cities jurisdictions that EMD has started working on and that will continue to maintain so that we can continue to work together with those partners, whether it's incorporated or unincorporated. Limitations. There are some recognized limitations to implementing a sidewalk vending ordinance. As mentioned previously, the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act clearly outlines the limitations of a local ordinance. A sidewalk vending ordinance only applies to vending on a sidewalk or other pedestrian path and does not apply to vending on private property. Administrative penalty amounts are subject to the ability to pay process if requested, and we plan to implement an education-first approach within existing department budgets. A more robust enforcement strategy may require additional funding. Many sidewalk vending operations occur in the evenings and on weekends. Additionally, due to the mobile nature of these operations, vendors can easily move from one location to another. With limited staff, budget, and resources, the education-first approach aims to ensure vendors are properly licensed and operate within the ordinance's legal and safety requirements. And we are available here to answer any of your questions.
All right. We have a nearly full queue here. Supervisor Desmond?
So before I get some, some questions about the private property implications, on the enforcement, Jania, what happens if you have a vendor that just continuously violates? And, you know, fine after fine, they just, they just refuse to pay. Do we have any kind of, kind of progressive fine system? I mean, I, I know it lays it out here up to, I think, the maximum of a thousand dollars or something. But are there any other sanctions that, that can be imposed on, I mean, I agree with you. Education, obviously, we want folks to be compliant. I mean, that's obviously the number one priority. But how would we handle a situation like that? Because I know other jurisdictions have dealt with this.
And I'm going to speak for CMFOs for the food safety portion and Chad can add for the business licensing. And so that is something that we are planning for of how do we manage these progressive enforcement situations? And so we do have the ability to have the progressive fines for each one of the instances that violations to a CMFO health permit, starting with the notice of violation and then each of the monetary amounts. After twelve months, it basically starts over. And this was the intent of the legislature for the state of California to have this decriminalization and so really bringing down that barrier. EMD does have the ability to impound food as well. So if we see that it does not meet health code safety standards and it's contaminated or it's not fit for human consumption, we can impound it. And so that is a mechanism if we see that. But other than that, we really need to adhere to the requirements in the CMFO, the Retail Food Code law of those monetary amounts. And then, of course, and you, you are absolutely correct, the education portion is a big, is a big part of it. And so we want to bring down as many barriers as we can to obtain a health permit and have these vendors operating legally and safely. So we're really going to look at how can we get them permitted so that they can continue their operations and not have to face these penalties.
Okay. And no need, Chad, to respond. I just think that hopefully we won't have to get to that point where we're having, we're dealing with situations like that where we have to resort to actually confiscating product, either food or merchandise, but. And then also on the educational piece, before we leave it, I have heard from, I'm sure, some of my colleagues as well in the Hispanic Chamber, at least one chamber volunteering to work with Sack County and other jurisdictions on, hey, provide resource information to these prospective small business owners about some other, not just education through the county about being compliant, but other resources that may be available to them if they want to start, you know, their own business and possibly move up to a brick and mortar type business. So I'll just preface my, my, some of my comments with, you know, remember these laws going through at the state legislature and certainly understand the, the idea that, look, we should make it easier for someone who's operating a small business. Certainly the type of business that Supervisor Kennedy is describing, I mean, I agree with that. There shouldn't be big government impediments to these, these types of businesses operating. And I think in terms of the CMFOs in the public right of way, I, I think you've done a tremendous job. Staff's done a great job. I mean, there are, there are a few, I think, gray areas and some definitions that we may need to nail down, which I am confident you'll be able to do that. So I'm, I'm supportive of what we have here for the CMFOs. My bigger concern, as I've always, already mentioned, is the, the larger ones, these, you know, kind of pop-up kitchens that show up in a lot of places in the, in the unincorporated area where they just show up at a parking lot, usually later at night, you know, much, much later than all the surrounding businesses are open, except for maybe that one bar in the neighborhood. And they're on private property, and they may have eight to ten stools around them, multiple propane tanks, not only for the food, but also to operate heaters. I mean, these are essentially mobile restaurants. I mean, they're a lot like a food truck, in my opinion, in terms of the amount of people they serve and kind of how they're structured. Can, can you talk a little bit about that? Because those are the ones, I think, that are most concerning, not only to the surrounding neighborhood. They do cause traffic issues and how they back up traffic. They keep businesses essentially open much later than the surrounding uses. There are, there are public health issues, I think, for the food handling there. And they, I think, undercut some of the brick and mortar businesses in the community. So what are your thoughts about that? Are, are, are we going to be hearing something back about how we regulate those? Or do you think that we have sufficient regulations in place to deal with them?
So when it comes to the pop-up tents or some of these more larger mobile operations, there's a lot to consider and to look at as we're addressing them. And so we do EMD, and I'll let Chad also speak to it from a business licensing perspective. When we receive complaints or notifications of these occurring, we do an investigation. We go out and meet these vendors, see what their operations are, educate them on, on the, the proper way to, for health and safety, for food safety. And there are many considerations that we look at in terms of where they're vending, private property versus public property. With this ordinance, it'll give the code enforcement some, some ability to restrict, you know, with the tables and the chairs and the lights and the heat sources. So a lot of that will be addressed through that, that process. As far as the food is concerned, we'll, of course, look at to see if the food is safe. We may have to impound or, or, you know, cause it to be destroyed. And then really wanting to ensure that they're meeting CMFO requirements. And so that's when we'll work with the vendor. Maybe operations need to change somewhat. Some of these menu items cannot be served, and so we'll work with them to get them permitted and then have their operations meet requirements for, for the Retail Food Code.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, are you saying that all those CMFO limitations that you outline in your presentation, they would apply to a CMFO on private property as well? Because I don't, I don't, okay, so where is that explicit in, in the code? Or is that in other code sections?
So it's in the Retail Food Code. So any food sold to the public is under EMD purview.
Right?
That's state law, correct.
Okay. Because I, and the reason I ask, Jania, because I was, I mean, I did the California Restaurant Association and, you know, the Hispanic Chamber were, were making some rounds. And, and they were, they gave a comparison chart of some other jurisdictions. And it looks like in the city of Sacramento, they just simply have a, they reference private property and they say, hey, you have to have the, the permission of the property owner. And I think it also essentially refers to the code section relating to CMFOs on public property and says you also have to comply with all of those requirements as well. Could we do something that simple? Should we do something that simple?
So the CMFO requirements in the Retail Food Code is about foods, about the food and how it's cooked and how it's presented and how it's, it's served to the public. And then the location, the time, the manner, all of that, that's under a different ordinance. So we don't have authority, EMD, necessary to say where you can serve food. It's where, how the food is cooked and is it safe for consumption. So that's why we work very closely with code enforcement, business licensing, Sheriff's Office, because there's all these other considerations about the location of where these are occurring. So the ordinance for sidewalk vending will address time, manner, and place. And then the CMFO will address the food safety element. And does, Chad, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Or Barry?
Barry, again, I just want to get assurance that we are, we have the proper tools in place to deal with the private property.
So they cannot be on private property unless they have the permission of the property owner, unless they have a bathroom. It all is the same kind of what they're asking for in, in CMFOs. But it's, it's basically a code, it's a zoning code issue. So we can address that. Yeah, we can address it. And ultimately, you know, like she said, we need to, we need to have the process of what somebody continues to violate, that we're going to pull their stuff. I mean, because they won't stop otherwise. And, and I think we've done some outreach already with the non-food vendors, and we've basically given them the same rules. And we've been able to just move them on by talking to them. This will be a bigger deal. Because a lot of these guys now are established. I was on Wad Avenue last Thursday night and I saw four.
On private property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can, we can work on that and we can take care of it ultimately.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez?
So before I get to my comments and questions, I just want to let you know that I own a restaurant in the city of Olsom. I am disclosing this in the interest of transparency. I do not have a financial interest as defined by the Political Reform Act and the decision of whether or not to adopt these ordinances, which would preclude me from participating in this item. I am simply disclosing my interests in the restaurant out of abundance of causation. So first, I do want to thank staff because I know this is a very detailed and sort of complicated item. But I am pleased to see that the ordinance gives sidewalk vendors a guideline, especially because, you know, for brick and mortars, we have a very highly regulated environment. And so I think this will give food vendors the ability to have a roadmap to do things safely. My questions are, there have, many of the ones that I see, and I, and I do just, I was curious about, about them, and they're very similar. So you will have very similar settings in several different parts of the county. And so it made me question whether there was a corporate, a corporate business versus the individual business. And so if it is one entity that has many locations, will the requirements be for a specific location where they'll have to get one for each location that they have? Or, or does one suffice for all the different locations that they have? And I hope that, is that question clear?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'll address the CMFO, the food portion for the health permit. It is a permit for each location.
Okay.
That is the same for business licensing. We would still need a location for each stand or cart.
So if a, and I'll call these pop-up kitchens because that's how I, how I define them. But if, if they have several different locations that they set up shop, do they have to have those requirements for every single location? So in the event when code enforcement goes, it will, it will be specific to that particular location that they're at?
If they're stationary and they're setting up routinely in the same location, did it be licensed for that specific location? If they're roaming, it would be for that specific cart, and that license is supposed to be displayed at that location or on that cart.
And so that particular cart can mover, and I'm not, I guess I'm not really, really talking about carts. I'm more referring to the large pop-up kitchens that are popping up throughout the county.
And they would have to be licensed for each location.
Okay. The other question I have is, there, there was one that was very concerning, and it was on Jackson Highway and Grantline Road. It was more in like the, a dirt area, and the kitchen was, was built out with tables and chairs. So that, see, I assume that's not private property. It may have been, I, I mean, I don't know, I guess I don't know what the location is. So in those instances, well, if, if code enforcement shows up and finds that they are, they are creating what could be potentially, you know, an accident because of the entrance into the dirt area, will they have them shut down?
That's really a question I think you're directing toward code enforcement. We will provide our authority to code enforcement to enforce any conditions under the business licensing ordinance. But code could certainly reach out to other ordinances, other codes, and I think Barry's coming up to address that, that are part of their existing authority that might apply in that situation.
Hello, Barry.
So I'm very familiar with that site because I drive by it every single day when it's there. And I've spoken to them, and they go away for a while, then they come back. But that's on a county right of way. They definitely don't have a bathroom. They definitely have people sitting there. So my opinion of that was that they need to go. They shouldn't be there because there's nothing good about it. They have bright lights on, and when you leave here and it's dark, the lights are, you know, they're, they can be a problem. So my belief would be that those folks are going to need to go.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Barry, you may want to take a seat in the front row so you don't have to ask Troy to stand up.
Supervisor Kim?
Were you done?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just want to express my sincere thanks for coming forward with this program. I don't know if this was an outcropping of my plea for help from this dais in trying to address the proliferation of these types of vendors or if it was something staff felt needed to be done anyway. But however we got here, thank you. And I also appreciate the education. You know, I thought it was maybe us being a little too lax in our enforcement. And in reality, these pieces of legislation, SB 946 and 972, I encourage anyone that has interest in this item, or in this issue, rather, to read those pieces of legislation because it is astounding to me how much interference the state legislature put down onto local governments with respect to enforcing practices that are in place for a good reason. In addition to all of the impacts to the neighborhood, there are reasons behind a lot of these things that, that we have in place that, that most businesses in the food sector particularly have to comply. And, and that really was my, my genesis behind wanting to pursue enforcement. Again, to go back to what I think Supervisor Desmond said, I don't begrudge anybody out there trying to make an honest living and improve their station in life and try and provide a service of value to people. It's the inequity of how our standards are applied that just frosts me. Because we have brick and mortar restaurants that are subject to random inspections, that have to have certain temperatures, that have to have all of these things to operate their business, who also pay property taxes or rent, pay payroll taxes. Do we even collect sales taxes for these sidewalk vendors? Are they even in that level of compliance with sort of the order of things?
They're required to obtain a seller's permit, but sales tax reporting is done through the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, a state department. So we will have limited insight to whether they were, are doing their full required reporting.
Okay. And so then you move over into the food truck space. And even food trucks have to abide by pretty stringent regulations, particularly having a commissary or somewhere that can be inspected to make sure they're going through proper food handling provisions. And then, as I think I've said before, you know, you have a situation of a festival or some sort of a fundraiser event that a nonprofit wants to do to raise a little bit of money, and they're- of money. And they're subject to inspections and have to have screened in tents and all of these other things. And yet these people come out flying in the face of everything that our departments are trying to do to protect certainly our constituents, but also just make sure that that people are going through the right procedures and motions. And it just, it blows my mind that and then why I asked the question is, technically, according to those pieces of legislation I just referenced, we can go up and tell this business, show us your business license, get that food in order, show a wash basin. No. Here's my my waiver. I'm too broke to pay anything. So go away and I'm going to keep doing my business. And we can go, well, we were here yesterday. Here's now we're here again. That's your second time. Now it's $500. And they go, no, here's my waiver. I'm too broke to pay, right? So it's it's ridiculous to me, the the complete lack of teeth. And so I want to focus in on this, why I asked Barry to stay close, is I think I heard you say, Jania, that that propane fueled cooking devices are verboten regardless of this ordinance or or the state legislation. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So I was driving along the other day, and here's how brazen these tents have become. Literally, they were the Al Pastor Taco spits with the big fire that has the meat cooking. Like, there's nothing approved or sanitary about that situation. Is that a situation where right there, you're in violation, shutdown, close it up, move on?
I'm going to bring Rolando Villarreal up here to talk about some of the requirements for those cooking instruments.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So to answer the question, there is a portion in the code that requires for heating, a heating element. And that could be either electrical generator for sometimes, in this case, sometimes propane. So those are some of the requirements that are in there. Again, they have to be an integral part of the the equipment itself, or the cart.
Okay, so clarify that for me or put it in the layman terms so I understand here. We say you can't use a gas powered generator. So if it's a electric heating element that's plugged into a gas powered generator, that's a no go. If it's connected to a propane tank, is that a situation that would be in violation?
That would be something that not not in regards to health and safety, in terms of what we do in in the food world. But it could be in violation with other local jurisdictions or other ordinance that they may have in place.
Okay. Relative to this ordinance, what we're what we're considering here today, does it speak to that issue of somebody that that has a cooking element? I'm not talking about warming. I'm talking this is meat that is raw.
Yeah.
That is being cooked on premises.
That that would be in violation in terms of how they're processing or how they're cooking it.
And that's true whether they're on public property or private property, correct?
That's correct.
And so what is our recourse as a civilized society in order to say what you're doing is not acceptable?
That would be a lot tremendous amount of outreach and education, and also following it up with obviously some type of enforcement process, which is in front of you in terms of the proposed ordinances.
Okay. And that brings me to my next line of questioning, which is, and I don't know if this is necessarily for you particularly, but we spend an inordinate amount of time going through the massage licensing fee ordinance process, the justification for which was due to the expense of enforcing shutting down bad operators. Now we have a situation where I think it's a relatively inexpensive licensing fee. We have an enforcement component that you just admitted is going to be pretty difficult to administer and is very pervasive at this point because of the lackadaisical Wild West proliferation that has happened in the last few years. And so how are we ever going to get out in front of that and have a situation where we're not or where we're able to put the appropriate boots on the ground to to bring people into compliance?
I think that's one of the the core challenges that we're faced with is we're restricted in the ability of the administrative penalties that we can charge. And those administrative penalties are subject to the ability to pay waiver. And so those are revenues that we can't necessarily depend on to fund enforcement activities. And so it requires us to try and identify another another funding source, which is either reaching into our department budgets to do this over some other activity, or to look for additional funding. And because there are administrative penalties on the business licensing side to go after those bad actors, we've not tried to increase our fee dramatically because we want the fee to be accessible. We want people to come in and be licensed. And we did look at other comparable jurisdictions for the business licensing fee. And the range is generally between $60 and $120, depending on the jurisdiction. And so this is quite inexpensive. We want the businesses to come in and be compliant and do it right. And that's really our goal because we know the enforcement cost is likely going to be greater than any revenue we generate.
And I appreciate that. And I agree with it wholeheartedly. I would rather have some level of compliance and adherence than none. But I'm also just cognizant of the fact that there is no revenue stream for that enforcement. And so I'm just trying to explore that this is something other than just an intellectual exercise, that we do have a way to actually do something here for people who are, as far as I'm concerned, acting as complete scofflaws. And as you mentioned, you shut them down in one location and they're just going to pop up somewhere else, or they're going to go to the jurisdiction that doesn't have quite as stringent requirements. I mean, these are real impacts to the communities and and to the businesses. And so I appreciate the effort, but I just, I think we're not quite there yet on how we actually have a meaningful utilization of this. Thank you, Chair.
Supervisor Desmond.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the important, thank you, Supervisor Hume, just to pick up on a few of those of those points that he made. The enforcement issue is not simply a matter of maybe a lack of some of the tools and some of the authority. And when you look at our fine structure, it's also just the logistics of it. And this is the biggest concern that we have, I think, in my district and from constituents complaining about the larger pop-up kitchens that usually show up after hours late at night in a private parking lot, that there is no one out there to enforce from the county. There is no one working in code enforcement. There's no one in EMD working in those hours. So our recourse is to call the sheriff's department, and that is an extremely low priority for them. So I guess my question is for for you, as part of this this effort, which has been great, and I'm extremely appreciative, have there has there been any discussion about that, about the resources for that very enforcement action on weekends and later in the evenings?
So EMD, Jania Monasterio from EMD. So EMD has put together an unpermitted vending team. And this team has been coordinating with some operations already with the city of Sacramento, city of Rancho Cordova, city of, is it Elk Grove?
Elk Grove.
Elk Grove, and the city of Elk Grove. And we're looking at expanding that within the unincorporated as well. And so a lot of these vending activities, we know where they're occurring. We receive complaints and they're they're known spots. And they're they're good spots for the vendors because they're receiving customers. And so that works for them. And so that's part of the coordinated effort and approach that we're looking at that combines education and then also going out there in in with all of the different departments at the same time. So code and EMD and business licensing would be addressing the issue from all the different angles. And so that's something that we have done with some of the city jurisdictions. We'd like to continue doing that in the unincorporated as well. And like I said, it provides that educational aspect in addition to the enforcement aspect.
And I'm assuming code enforcement is part of that effort and discussion and deployment as well?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Don't listen to him. He's front and center.
And obviously, these are budgetary issues as well, because we know these are not going to be costs that are that are recouped. So.
Yeah. And when they're targeted, it does help us to streamline. And we can, you know, work within our budgets, but we may need to have that discussion at a later date is what kind of enforcement is desired, and then what that would cost and how we can do that.
So all three of you have mentioned education multiple times. Can you name the languages that we're going to be educating folks in?
So from the EMD perspective, we have multiple languages that we have staff that can speak in. Spanish is probably one of the top. We've done already nine, yes, that's correct, nine CMFO class outreaches, classroom workshops since 2023, and those are done in Spanish. We always have a Spanish speaking person available. And then, like I said, we have multiple languages outside of that. So we really feel comfortable that EMD will be able to take care of the language if there is a barrier there.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
One aspect that I have, I haven't heard discussed is the safety on should a fire be, should a fire erupt from, you know, one of the propanes or the generators? Because those are the two things that they have. Is a fire extinguisher a requirement? Chad, do you know?
As far as the CMFO, well, actually, Rolando, is that, I'm going to bring Rolando up. He'll be able to answer that.
Good afternoon. For any, what you consider the pop-up tents or pop-up restaurants, under CMFO, they are required to have some type of fire extinguishing device.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. I assume we're through with the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Because this is more of a comment than a question. You know, I, when I first saw this, I was a little concerned, just because I want to make sure. Well, first of all, going back 15 years or so with the with EMD, and particularly Jania's area, you know, we've come a long way under your leadership, your predecessor's leadership, to go from being a gotcha agency to being somebody who is looking out for the health and safety of the public while still being a partner with communities. And when I say partner, I specifically mean a culturally relevant, understanding and sensitive partner. That's what concerned me about this. I understand we have state law we have to be in conformity with. But, you know, I'm I'm comfortable with the culture at your organization that we're not going to go after this heavy handed in a way that doesn't take into account the various cultures in each community in the county. I know that, you know, in all five districts, you can probably point to to examples of these where they add to the cultural fabric of the community. You know, we, we do not want to be looking at this through a homogeneous lens. You know, Supervisor Serna is correct. And, you know, we have to make sure that when we do this education, we're doing it in a language, in a way with using utilizing languages that are appropriate and necessary. So I hope that we'll continue to take that approach. You know, you know, what would New York City be without hot dog vendors? You know, what would, and I can tell you even up and down some of the corridors in South Sacramento, these aren't just people who, and they are people who are out there making an honest living. And that's important. And we have to encourage that. But they're also something that make it unique, that make it different. And I never want to do anything that makes Sacramento County look so vanilla that that we're not taking that into account. So I guess that's my cautionary tale is that we continue to do that. I have faith that you will. But want to be on record that that needs to continue to be a priority as we enforce this this ordinance. Thank you.
Supervisor Rodriguez.
Last comment. I, I was, as I was listening to Supervisor Kennedy, I, I thought of the last 10 years, being a business owner and having the Department of Public Health that went into environmental management. And I have to say that in the 10 years that I have been in business, it was a pleasure when our health inspector would come into the business. At the very, very beginning, it was fearful, it was scaring some. But then you become, they, it become educational. And that's what, that's, that was the main message was if something wasn't being done correctly, it was an educational opportunity to teach. And I became very good friends with Jan Bradshaw because he really is an incredible teacher. And he, if if something just wasn't done correctly, he was very good about the educational part of being a business owner. And I'm sure that that is the same type of of messaging that will go out to these pop-up vendors. It'll be educational, it'll be friendly, it'll be really about what is in the best interest of the public and how do we protect the public. And so just my own personal experience is it has been very positive when when we get visits from your department. So thank you.
Thank you. Our CEO is in the queue here. Before we go to Mr. Villanueva, just one more scenario I want to get some clarity on. So Spanish speaking Paleta vendors, so these are typically Spanish speaking popsicle vendors in the summer. They are mobile, and they operate similar to what we're all familiar with from our, you know, most childhoods of the ice cream vendors that were in small vans and whatnot. But this is on a smaller scale. So how would, how did, how does something like that get handled with this change in policy?
So I'm going to have Rolando come up and confirm. But I do believe that's a already existing mobile food category that we are currently permitting. So it's it's outside of the CMFO. But I'll have Rolando confirm that.
Yeah, yes, that's correct. It is already in place in terms of the the push cart with the ice cream. So that would be similar to what a CMFO is when you have a push cart. So we do have that process already in place.
Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Villanueva.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I just wanted to go back to Supervisor Hume's comments about funding for this. Both EMD and business license their fee for service. So they get their fees either from charging those fees or from penalties. Because of the education first portion of the law and the limitations on the amount of penalties we can charge, I don't see us being able to continue this education and continue this enforcement without some sort of general fund commitment. So assuming the board wants us to continue this, and we'll have this discussion towards next fiscal year. But I just wanted to warn you that, not warn you, inform you that that this is something that will probably take a bite out of the general fund. So I just wanted to be upfront with that.
How unusual is that?
How unusual is?
That when we have an enterprise fund that then begins to lean on general fund for enforcement?
I don't know about enforcement, but as far as general fund contribution.
Implementation.
For general fund contribution, I can think of one off the top of my head is, which is Rhodes, which we're contributing about $20 million a year. I would have to get back to you on which other enforcement. But off the top of my head, I can't think of any.
But then again, we have other enterprise funds that don't, we don't contribute anything.
That's true.
Right?
That is very true.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry. One more time. You know, there aren't that many of these that we're talking about in the overall big scheme of things. I mean, it's, you know, not like restaurants. So I wonder if there's a mechanism in which that the department that's enforcing can let the various district, district representatives know when something has occurred within their district. Whether, I don't want to go to, you know, I don't want to get a consultant to come in and create software to do this. But if there's a way to do that, I would encourage it.
Yes, we can look at that.
All right. Well, no shortage of questions and comments as usual. But that's a good thing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to address the board?
We do, Chair Serna. We have one person who has requested to speak. We're now to Betsy Wieland.
Okay. Good morning, Board. Thank you for your time and congratulations Supervisor Rodriguez on your election.
Thank you.
I'm here speaking. My name is Betsy Wieland, and I'm here speaking for Save the American River Association. And we have a couple of requests for consideration from from our organization for the supervisors this morning. If you haven't already done so, please join jurisdictions across the state who are asking the legislature for clarifications to SB 946 972. It is raising far more questions and concerns than it has answered. It's chaotic. Specifically related to the American River Parkway, all parks are not created equal. The American River Parkway is not Carmichael Park. It is Sarah's understanding that state parks is not included in the state law we are discussing. The American River Parkway is not a state park, but it is governed by state law, the Urban American River Parkway Preservation Act. SB 946 requires compliance with other generally applicable laws. Before approving the park's portion of the ordinance, ask for consistency determination with the American River Parkway plan. The purpose of the American River Parkway is not, and I quote from SB 946, "to allow aspiring entrepreneurs to access formal, the formal economy." It's Sarah's understanding that parks, that the park subcommittee assigned to work on this ordinance have not finished their work. Before you amend Title IX, Chapter 9.36, allow the subcommittee to finish their work and bring a complete ordinance forward, including the RS. and bring a complete ordinance forward, including the RFPs. Just a question. Has staff contacted other park systems across the state as to how they are dealing with 946, especially those who manage regional parks charged with protecting natural resources for the enjoyment of the public seeking escape from the urban environment? Thank you for your consideration. And also, we would like to thank staff very, very much for taking this so seriously and trying their best to reconcile all of these conflicting interests and resolving the situation. That's bad.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marlon Lara.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Thank you, Board. My name is Marlon Lara. I'm the Legislative Director with the California Restaurant Association. You all were gracious enough to give me some time this week to meet with you and raise some of our concerns. But I do want to start off with, we are very supportive of this ordinance. Restaurants and vendors can coexist. And then lastly, food safety is our number one priority in everything that we do. I've been hearing the meeting and kind of hearing all the questions that you all are asking about fire hazards, whether certain quote-unquote "pop-up kitchens" could one day be considered under the CMFO code. I've been hearing, you know, whether there could be restrictions based on health, safety, and welfare of certain sensitive areas, kind of like the River Parkways. I think from all those questions that I'm hearing, there's a lot of opportunity to continue to clarify in this ordinance based on the powers that were granted to you all in state law to clarify those things. In fact, other cities in the county have done them and are doing them. I shared with the board a outline of the seven different cities in Sacramento County. Galt has specific language on vending on private property. The city of Sacramento has ordinances and language on vending on private property. In fact, the city of Sacramento has specific language around vending in Old Sacramento because of the historical significance of that area. I guess just three things. One, I want to highlight that there's a lack of consistency in ordinances in other jurisdictions. I understand that you can't really tell member cities what to do, but that would help a lot with the patchwork of ordinances that we see today in enforcement. And then, again, the issue around vending on private property. There is an opportunity for the board to take some action there. And lastly, if you give me five more seconds, on the issue around the RFP for the parks, I just don't see any reason why the board would not be able to have a say in that. Right? It's just a matter of clarifying is what we're trying to say here. That way, people know how to vend, where to vend, and how to do it safely. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlon. All right. That concludes our public speakers on the item. And we'll come back to my colleagues, starting with Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the public comments as well. Again, want to thank staff one more time. I'm supportive, and I will move approval of the item. Just a request, obviously, to keep the discussion going and especially the discussion about the enforcement, particularly with respect to the larger kitchens on private property. And I'll be looking to staff, meeting with staff about some of those, both reactively and proactively, some of these larger operations. But with that, I move approval of the item.
I'll second.
Okay. The item has been moved by Supervisor Desmond and seconded by Supervisor Rodriguez. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I recognize that we have a motion and second in place, but I have a question of staff. I'm interested in pursuing a little more influence over the private property situation, such as some of the other ordinances that cities have adopted are doing. Is it easier to have that discussion now and make sausage from the dais? Or should we go ahead and approve what we have before us with the understanding that we'd like to come back and modify to future date? Assuming I would have concurrence from at least two of my colleagues.
Yes.
We'd appreciate if the board would allow us to come back with that so we can research specifically what are the models that are being used that were referenced by the California Restaurant Association, see how those might fit into our model and whether they would fit into these specific ordinances, or whether there's a fit in a different area of county ordinance that we may need to modify.
Roger that. Thank you.
All right. Very good. And then I'll just, before we vote, specifically thank Betsy Wieland for her suggestion that we continue to get clarification from the state. This is not unique. It, in fact, is kind of the de facto rule of counties in California that when state law is passed and counties are expected to implement, and most of the time implement it, a cost that is not complemented with state funding, that there are various areas of gray that we have to figure out for ourselves. So I think it's incumbent upon us to continue to kind of circle back with the right folks at the state of California for clarity because of some of the unique circumstances we have here in Sacramento County, one of which is the fact that we have this incredible regional asset called the American River Parkway. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
That item passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you.
Item number 45 is the Arco Metro Air Park Project. It is a request for a use permit, special development permit, design review, and approved request for letter of public convenience or necessity for a Type 21 off-sale liquor license for a property located at the southwest corner of West Elkhorn Boulevard and Metro Air Parkway in the Natomas community. There's also an environmental document addendum with prior environmental impact report.
Madam Clerk, do we need to have people sworn on this one?
On this one, we do. So for those that, if you wish to address the board about item number 45 on the agenda, please stand to be sworn. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm? When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record in this statement I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. There it is. Good afternoon, members of the board. This project before the board is PLMP 2023-00046 and 00048. It is the Arco A&amp;PM at Metro Air Park. And the entitlements that you are considering today are a use permit, special development permit, design review, and a letter of public convenience and/or necessity for off-sale of beer, wine, and spirits, also known as a Type 21 license. The project site is located at the southwest corner of West Elkhorn Boulevard and Metro Air Parkway in the Metro Air Park specific planning area. The subject parcel is a vacant 1.37-acre site that is located in District 5A and District 5C of the Metro Air Park SPA. These designations are intended for offices, retail services, and hotels in support of the Sacramento International Airport and the Metro Air Park users. In looking at the plan that we have up, the site is in red, but you can notice that further to the west, there is an Amazon distribution center. And although the site and the surrounding area is currently vacant, there are some entitlements that have been approved for hotels in approximately this area here. This is the one-mile radius map for the letter of public convenience and/or necessity for the requested off-site sale of the Type 21 alcohol. As you can see, there are no other alcohol sales within that one mile. This Metro Air Park SPA is adjacent, sorry, to the Sacramento International Airport, and there is a subdivision located within the city of Sacramento over there. One of the things to note is that in this census tract, it permits zero off-sale licenses due to its low population. So as far as site and entitlement history, the subdivision review committee did approve a tentative parcel map in 2021, and this was one of the lots that was included in that. The map was recorded in 2023, and the subject parcel was parcel one of that map recollection. Staff has reviewed current code enforcement cases and has concluded that there are no active cases on this property. So there are two entitlements that are before the Board of Supervisors today. There is PLMP 2023-00046, which is the use permit for the 12-pump automobile service station, a 3,400-square-foot A&amp;PM convenience store, and a roughly 1,100-square-foot drive-through car wash that would have four vacuum stalls. It also includes a special development permit to deviate for the landscape requirements around trash receptacles. So in most cases, it's supposed to have five feet of landscaping on three sides. In this particular case, it only has landscaping on the two sides. And it is also to exceed the total sign area for an automobile service station. Our code allows 125 square feet. They are asking for 223 square feet. It is also a design review to determine compliance with the countywide design guidelines. The other entitlement that is before you today is PLMP 2023-00048, which is a letter of public convenience and/or necessity from the board for the Type 21, which is the beer, wine, and spirits sale. It is also called a PCN. This PCN is necessary because the census tract is both over-concentrated and considered high crime. The census tract is located at the northwest corner of the county. It does include Metro Air Park, the Sacramento International Airport, and it has a population of approximately 218 people. Given that the off-sale ratio for getting an ABC license is one license per 1,165 square people, I mean, I'm sorry, 1,165 people, this census tract does not qualify for any off-sale licenses. The other thing to note is that there are currently two active Type 20 off-sale of beer and wine, and they are located at facilities in the Sacramento International Airport, so some distance away at the airport. This site is also in Sheriff's District 1. It's the Sacramento subarea, but it is, for this particular site, classified as having a crime rate that exceeds the district average by more than 20%. So you're dealing with the over-concentration and the high crime for this particular site. As you saw on our previous map, though, within a one-mile radius, there are no other alcohol sales that are occurring. And then there's also no identified sensitive uses, which is one of the things that we present to you. However, there are residential subdivisions that is in the city of Sacramento within that one mile. So one of the other things to note is that the sheriff's department did protest granting the PCN unless conditions were opposed. And because PCNs cannot be conditioned, the applicant has agreed to have those conditions from the sheriff be added to the use permit that is also before you.
Before you leave the slide?
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
It's too late then. The, on the signage, I'm curious, that's almost 100% increase in the square footage. So what, is this a monument sign? Is this a sign that is going to be affixed to the canopy? What type is it? A pylon?
It is, it's going to be largely some of the canopy signage that would be associated with it. And then they are asking for more than one monument sign because there are two frontages that are associated with this particular project. So they're asking to have a monument sign on both street frontages.
And the square footage of the sign, or signs, I guess that's really the heart of my question. Is it the cumulative square footage of all the signs? Or is it, it's like the largest sign that's on the property?
So when we calculate the signage, is the cumulative square footage of all the signage on the property? And then, but we do subtract out the pricing, the specific pricing.
Gotcha. And then on the fact that this is a Type 21 request, not a Type 20? I'm trying to recall, this is A&amp;PM Arco, correct?
Correct.
I can't remember the last time, and maybe it's just I don't shop for alcohol enough, but I don't, I can't recall the last time I saw spirits offered in an Arco. Does anyone here know how uncommon or common that is?
We do have a representative for the applicant here, and I think that they could speak to their business model and why they are requesting a Type 21 versus a Type 20.
All right.
All right. So as far as the environmental review, staff did conduct an environmental review for this proposed project. And an addendum to the Metro Air Park final EIR and supplemental EIR was prepared for the project. The addendum found that the proposed project would not change the final EIR findings and that no new substantial effects of significance would be resulting from this particular project. And all the mitigation measures that were previously associated with the Metro Air Park EIR will continue to be applied to this particular project. So this is the site plan for the particular project. As you can see, it is on a corner lot. There is the West Elkhorn Boulevard frontage and the Metro Air Parkway frontage. There is the fueling canopy, which is located right here. Sorry. And then there is the convenience store, which would be located right here. And then there is the car wash down here with its vacuum stalls. It does have the two driveways and the two frontages, as you can see. This is the proposed landscape plan for the project, with the exception of the special development permit item for the landscaping along the trash enclosure. It meets our percentage of landscaping for the automobile service stations, and it is also compliant with the specific landscaping requirements that you would find in the Metro Air Park SPA, which have to do with the type of trees that are along the street frontages, and then also a 40-foot enhanced corner feature. These are the proposed elevations that they're bringing forward. As you can see, it does have the architectural articulation along all the four sides of the proposed convenience store. This is the car wash, the fueling canopy, and this would be an example of the two monument signs that they have proposed. One thing to note is that Metro Air Park does have specific sign designs, and they are complying with that as well. So advisory recommendations for you. The Natomas CPAC did meet in April of 2024 to hear the project. There were no applicant, there were nobody speaking in opposition or favor, and that CPAC did recommend approval to the board of both the entitlements for the gas station convenience store and the PCN. In April of 2024, the DRAK considered the design of the project. They had some discussion with the applicant, and then they did end up recommending that the Board of Supervisors find that the design of the project is in compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And then lastly, this project went to the Planning Commission in November. As it was a non-contested item, the Planning Commission didn't have any questions or ask for a presentation, but they did recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors by a five-to-zero vote that they, that you approve the entitlements request, which in this case would be the gas station and convenience store, and so the use permit and the special development permit.
So let me interrupt here. Late last year, if memory serves me right, we approved an Arco station in District 4, one that was proposed by Mr. Petrovich. And planning staff will recall that that proposal incorporated charging infrastructure, plumbing, if you will, for future charging on-site. So I'm curious- So I'm curious to know, is that what is, is there something similar that's being proposed here in terms of the, when we make reference to future charging stations or existing charging stations? What exactly are we to expect?
So going back to the site plan, you will notice there's some, there are some parking spaces that are proposed along here. I believe these would be the ones that would be plumbed for the future EV parking. So that is considered as part of this project.
So it's comparable to what was proposed late last year? Okay.
Yes, you'll, you'll find that pretty much the majority of the gas station projects that you're going to see coming forward are going to have the infrastructure in place for EV parking.
Yeah, it's, well, yeah. The reason I ask the question is because I would expect that kind of consistency will follow in terms of how not just ARCO, AMPM probably, but all of the gas station franchisees will, you know, approach jurisdictions with, you know, kind of the same expectation for future charging locations. So that's the point of the question. Thank you.
Of course. So as far as staff's analysis of the project, we have found that it is consistent with the general plan, Metro Air Park SPA, and the zoning code as conditioned. The findings for the special development permit can be made. There are no significant environmental concerns, as referenced through our environmental analysis. The project was supported by the Natomas CPAC and the DRAK. And then the sheriff's conditions related to the sale of alcohol are included in the use permit as attachment to, and they are specifically findings 103 through 111. So therefore, planning and environmental review staff does recommend that the Planning Commission make the following find, I mean, I'm sorry, the Board of Supervisors makes the following determinations on this project. For PLMP 2023-00046, determine that the addendum, together with the environmental impact report prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and the guidelines, is adequate and complete. Approve the use permit, subject to the findings and conditions that are in attachment to of your staff report. Approve the special development permit, also subject to findings and conditions. Find that the project is substantially compliant with the countywide design guidelines. And then for PLMP 2023-48, approve the letter requesting the public convenience and/or necessity in accordance with the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control requirements. So that concludes staff's presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is also in attendance today.
Very good. Thank you for the presentations. Any questions of questions that we're playing stuff? Okay, seeing none, we will invite the applicant or applicant representative to the podium.
Good afternoon. Leslie Burnside with Barghousen Consulting Engineers. I also have the owners and operators here as well. I thought I'd go ahead and tackle the questions that Chairman Cerner brought up first. They were very good ones. The EV chargers, Leanne pointed out the number of parking stalls. I just wanted to let you know, that isn't just going to be future infrastructure. We're actually going to be installing the chargers with the project.
Very good.
You guys had a code for a while where our gas station project had to install one, and you did us a favor because we were, we had to kind of figure out how to do it. And it wasn't particularly easy, but here we are today, and so now we're, we're better equipped to go ahead and do that. You were also asking about the Type 21 in the gas stations. It's, it's a trend. It's coming. You're probably going to, going to see some more. Not, not from our company currently, but ARCO Corporate kind of went in that direction, and there's a lot of interest on part of the, of the dealers. But I am aware of numerous gas stations among our clients that have them or have, you know, are intending to pursue it.
I have a question. I'm reading through the conditions, and I specifically looking at the section that the Sheriff's Office provided, I thought I would see more relative to restrictions on the volumes, the container composition of...
Container size.
Singles, that kind of thing. But because this is Type 21, which includes spirits, well, I guess what I'm interested in understanding is, for instance, are we going to be selling, are we going to be permitting or otherwise sanctioning the sale of little bottles of liquor?
No. One of the, one of the conditions actually...
At a gas station?
One of the conditions actually says there's a, it can't be smaller than 750 milliliter. So they're, they're full bottles.
Okay, yeah. I mean, this sort of does send, send a message. It's not one I'm particularly comfortable with because it's an automotive use, and it's married to, you know, not just beer and wine, but higher alcohol products, and that, that makes me squirm a little bit. Go ahead.
Okay. As far as the signage, what we, I think you, I don't know if you have the ability of putting up that, that landscape plan again? Thank you. So there's a primary monument sign, and then there's, what we proposed was a secondary small pricing sign. And the reason for that is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to my signage sheet here. Bear with me. It's folded. Here we go. Are we able to get that? Oh, the thingy. I don't know how to work the thingy.
That's okay. Most of us can't work.
Okay. So the primary reason we, we asked for the additional monument sign is, Leanne went and talked about the standard within the Metro Air Park plan for an enhanced corner. There's a double row of trees there. It's very, very busy. It's, it's not very visible. But it's also because of the visibility under California weights and measures of gas prices being able to be seen by both directions. That's the primary reasons we suggested it. So just to, to go ahead and move on, I don't really have a presentation. I wanted to answer your questions. We're very excited to be here. It's a new, exciting plan area. We're one of the very first commercial projects coming forward. We want to really thank staff and also the MEPOA Property Owners Association group for helping to guide us through the complexities of the design guideline and the design guidelines of the plan. We believe it's a very compelling and attractive project. We agree to all conditions of approval and to Chairman Cerner's comments. If there is anything that you think you would like to add as far as additional comments or, excuse me, conditions in the PCN or on the use permit, we're very willing to entertain that.
I appreciate that very much. So I have a question. When would this be in operation?
We've actually started doing our construction documents, so we would probably be submitting within the next two, two and a half months. Usually takes between six and, and 10 months to get permits, depending on how busy some of the agencies get. So we could be under construction, you know, by the beginning of next year. They definitely want to move on it.
So, and then you expect what, maybe, I don't know what timeline is for construction?
Nine months, six to nine months.
Okay.
Yeah, it could move faster.
So you're operational in fall of '26? So being very familiar with the Northlake community, which is the residential community in the city of Sacramento immediately to the east, that's the only residential community on that side of I-5 and that side of 7099.
Right.
So you, your clients will be really the only retailer, at least for some, a little bit of time, will be the only retailer that close, that convenient to that community as it continues to build out. What can you tell me, or what can your clients tell me about maybe the sale of maybe uncommon food items such as fresh produce, milk and eggs, those types of things that will actually serve as being convenient, not from the standpoint of alcohol or gas sales, but from the standpoint of, you know, fresh, especially fresh foods for at least the time being for, for that community? I know it's not a supermarket, it's not designed to be a supermarket, but it's actually going to function as one to some extent for a little bit of time. So I don't know if you're prepared to answer that or your clients, but I'd like to kind of understand that.
Yeah, well, there is actually one condition that requires us to provide at least 15% of healthy foods. It was kind of based on the Healthy Foods Initiative from, from a few years ago. Routinely, the ARCO's merchandise, and I'll turn around and double-check on this, but usually they have whole fruit. They have like apples, bananas, oranges, healthy snacks, things that, you know, are not heavily salted, you know, granola, nuts, things like that. It's usually how they, how they achieve that. Eggs are routinely merchandised, milk, eggs, cheese, you know, some basic cheese products, things like that.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant's representative? All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I appreciate the line of questioning that you went down relative to the availability of spirits. Whether it's a trend or not, I don't support the availability of spirits at a fueling station, and so I will not be in support of a Type 21. I would have no issue with a Type 20.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any others signed up to speak?
We do not.
All right, very good. Okay, then I'll go ahead and move the item and ask for a second. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
That item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 46 is to authorize an increase from $8 to $9 of the alternative per transaction day customer facility charge collected from airport rental car companies for purposes of designing, financing, and constructing a consolidated rental car facility at Sacramento
Great, thank you. Pulling up the presentation? Okay, thanks. Chris Wimsat, Assistant Director of Airports. Thank you, Chair Cerner, members of the board. So this item being brought before you today is intended for your approval for...
Metro, if you could please put up the last presentation for item number 45, please.
Item 45.
Oh, 46. I'm on the wrong item. I'm so sorry. There we go.
Been a long waiting.
There we go. So this item is intended to request approval to move from an $8 per transaction day customer facility charge to a $9 customer facility charge. Very quick refresher on the customer facility charge. This is a fee paid by folks who come to the airport and rent cars at our rental car facility. It is regulated in state law. It's maxed at $9 per transaction day for up to five days. We're currently at $8 per transaction day. So very quickly, what, what I'm going to cover are going to be the board actions to date related to rental cars in the CFC, the eligible costs, very quick funding analysis, and then just a snapshot of what other California airport CFCs are, and then I'll cover the project target dates. So in 2019, the Board of Supervisors approved both the Airport Capital Improvement Plan, which included a new consolidated rental car facility, as well as authorizing the first $10 per transaction customer facility charge, which went into effect May 1 of 2019 and originally was intended to last until December of 2020. In December of 2020, given the ongoing impacts of the COVID pandemic, the, the authorization for that $10 per transaction CFC was extended. In February of 2022, the Board of Supervisors approved the SMF Airport Master Plan, which included the consolidated rental car facility as well as our preferred alternative. And then in October of 2022, the, you gave approval to transition to an $8 per transaction day customer facility charge for up to five days. So the eligible costs that the CFC is able to pay are associated basically entirely with consolidated rental car facilities. So planning, design, construction, there are some forms of transportation that are eligible to be paid, specifically around transportation to and from a rental car facility, as well as debt service costs and construction costs associated with the facility. When we originally came before you to request approval of the $8 per transaction day CFC, we were still seeing some of the impacts of the COVID pandemic, which resulted in a slightly increased rate of rental car transactions per deplane passengers. That has mitigated to some extent. Those impacts, combined with the impact of higher interest rates, are really necessitating the request to increase from $8 to $9 today. So one of the requirements in state law is that we have an independent accountant perform an audit of the reasonableness of our assumptions and of our revenue forecast. And so we retain Macyus, Jenny, and O'Connell to, to audit our schedule of forecasted revenues. And MGO provided an opinion that the revenue schedule and underlying assumptions provide a reasonable basis for the management forecast. In addition to, in addition to the financial considerations and the audit considerations, there are also impacts that we can expect to rental car companies. And so we've also briefed our rental car partners on this, and we received letters of support from two of those rental car providers, those two letters being from Enterprise and Hertz. So as I mentioned, the customer facility charge is regulated in state law, and so the, the applicable airports and their charges for the customer facility charge that we looked at here are really those in California. And what we can see is the examples of the airports that are undergoing large, you know, significant consolidated rental car facility improvements have moved to the alternate transaction day, more specifically, many of them to the $9 per transaction day charge. So these are, just a quick summary again of the key project dates. So in October of 2022, we began the $8 per transaction day CFC. We began a procurement for the consolidated rental car facility in December of 2024. In March of 2025, we're expecting the statement of qualifications for that first round of the consolidated rental car facility procurement. And, and then pending your approval, we would transition to the $9 per transaction day CFC in, in February or March of this year. And then as of today, we're hoping to begin construction of that consolidated rental car facility in May of 2026, though there are some enabling projects associated with SMF Ford that need to get wrapped up first, specifically some of the roadway improvements and the, and the Terminal B parking garage. And then ideally, we would be scheduled for completion in August of 2028. So with that, happy to take any questions.
I think we all know, thank you for the presentation. I think we all know that the consolidated car rental facility is intended to provide travelers to Sacramento with, you know, their private ground transportation options. And that's who the charge is going to affect mostly. But do we, do we know instantly, though, whether or not the, the airport's car rental operations work in tandem with other of those brands' outlets elsewhere in the county that are intended, obviously, to serve maybe more so our constituents, our residents, when they, you know, have car repairs being done, that kind of thing? Do we know whether or not there are cases that residents are, would be using the car rental facility at the airport?
So the, the question, as I understand it, is whether or not local residents are, are making use of the rental car facilities at the airport. And we don't have, we don't have great data on that. We did have, we did collect data from Enterprise in 2021, which showed that between 2% and 3% of rental car transactions at Sacramento International Airport originated from zip codes outside of the county. That's the most applicable data, but to the extent that the operations at the airport support those elsewhere, we do not have information on that necessarily.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I kind of view this as a, as a TOT that we benefit from, from hotels. In this case, though, it feeds the Enterprise Fund, correct? Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak?
We do not have anyone sign up to speak, but I do need you to open and close the public hearing.
Thank you for the... Thank you for the reminder. Open the public hearing, close the public hearing. All right, I will move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 47 is Shiloh Arms Apartment Project's approval of a conditional loan commitment with Orbach Affordable Housing Solutions LLC, a related entity in the amount of $2,120,000.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager at Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting approval of a loan commitment in the amount of $2,120,000 of home funds for the preservation and rehabilitation of Shiloh Arms Apartments. There are 106 units that consist of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and four bedrooms, ranging between 30% and 60% of area median income. Currently, there is a housing assistance program contract or a HAP contract. The developer will be reapplying for the renewal that will give the contract another 20 years of federal assistance. In closing, staff is recommending approval of the loan commitment of $2,120,000 in home funds, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
That was a brilliant presentation. Quick question. Federal assistance, hot topic. I'd like to understand, is anything frozen that is affecting us currently?
Good afternoon, LaShelle Dozier, Executive Director at SHRA. We have been dealing with this all morning long and still trying to get some level of clarification as to will the freeze impact all of the federal funds, which you know do flow through the agency. As of this particular time, it's not official, but what we are learning is that our Section 8 probably will not be impacted. However, on our CPD side, so our home funds, our CDBG, our HOPWA, they probably will be impacted by this freeze. So we're still waiting for additional clarification, and we've been trying to access our systems all morning. We have been shut out from all of those systems pending more information.
So if you've been, if we've all been watching our news feeds through the morning, you'll know that nonprofits have been especially hit hard, to the point that I don't know if it's a class action or it can be a class action, but they've now sued the administration.
Yes.
So I'm curious whether or not, and maybe looking more to Ms. Travis, anyone, at some point, and it probably doesn't just apply to the mission of SHRA, but other aspects of county service delivery, is that something that we would ever consider looking at? And I know it's just an odd thing to do to consider litigation against the, the hand that feeds you, so to speak, but this is, these are unique times.
As Ms. Dozier said, the county, I think, is in the same position, sort of still figuring out what funds have been or will be frozen. And as that process continues, we'd be happy to work with the County Executive's Office or any other staff to see what sort of legal recourse we would have.
Of course, things are moving very, very swiftly, so maybe by the time we even have the chance to have another closed session and schedule that discussion, you know, things may change. But if they don't, and we're still faced with the same challenge, I'll just take this opportunity to look at our county CEO and county councils, say that's probably something we may want to consider scheduling. Anyhow, that's far afield from what we're being asked here to do, well, to Shiloh Arms and their conditional loan commitment here this morning. I know this project very well, as it, is a project that has seen various iterations over the decades of attention or the lack thereof, but it's, you know, very, it's kitty corner to my high school alma mater, and it's certainly in an area of District 1 I pay special attention to on a weekly basis. So I am happy to move the item. All right, it's been moved. Second, I assume we do not have any public speakers?
We do not.
Okay, please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item number 48 is authority to allocate the Mental Health Service Act funds of $2,500,000 in approval of final loan documents for the Auburn Oaks project.
Good afternoon, Chair. Whitney Hinton again with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Staff is requesting approval to commit funds and execute final loan documents in the amount of $2.5 million of Mental Health Services Act, or MHSA, funds for the Auburn Oaks project. Auburn Oaks is located at 7501 Sunrise Boulevard in the city of Citrus Heights. It was originally constructed in 1977 as a former 81-room assisted living facility and a 48-unit apartment complex that has fallen into disrepair over the years. It was leased to Goodwill and next moved through the county of Sacramento's Room Key Program, which provided temporary housing for COVID-vulnerable individuals. Hope Cooperative is the developer, secured a grant from the Californian Department of Social Services for the purchase and rehabilitation of the property, which will be converted into 88 permanent supportive housing units for residents earning up to 30% of area median income. Sacramento County DCFAS will fund two full-time service providers to deliver assistance case management for 30 residents who are involved with adult protective services and at risk for homelessness. Sacramento County Behavioral Health Services will fund two full-time service providers to support 30 participants and a senior-focused full-service partnership assisting individuals with serious mental illness who are experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The remaining 28 units will receive supportive services from the two full-time case managers provided by Hope Cooperative staff. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the final loan documents for Auburn Oaks project, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you. Supervisor Rodriguez.
I don't have many comments, but I do have one that I understand SHRA worked with Supervisor Frost and staff to ensure that the future project, project-based vouchers would help sustain this project. I just want to ensure that this project continues to be a priority as vouchers become available?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And with that, if there are no other comments or questions, I'll go ahead and move item number 48.
Second. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this matter?
We do not have public comments for this item.
Okay, please vote.
And that item passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Item number 49, this board will be acting as the housing authority of the county of Sacramento. We are asking that you make a motion to drop this item as the Auburn Falls project authorize a conditional loan commitment of $2,500,000 in housing authority funds with Sacramento Housing Authority repositioning program and approval of final bond documents for the project.
Okay. Moved by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by Supervisor Hume. Anyone, I get, no one needs to speak on this, so you'll just vote.
And that item passes unanimously. And that is the end of all of our timed items. We do have one member of the public that is here to make public comments on matters not relating to the agenda that was left over from this morning.
Okay.
If it pleases the Chair, Mr. Wade Breenelson.
Good afternoon.
Chair Serna and other supervisors. I'm Wade Breenelson, co-chair of the Family Advocates for Individuals with Serious Mental Illness in Sacramento County. Our group sent each of you a response to Sheriff Cooper's policy change, and in fact, two members that we've been in discussion with addressed you this morning, Kino Hopper and Patricia Wenzel. According to the Assistant Sheriff Peterson, this policy was a result of a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision in the Scott versus Smith case in Las Vegas, in which officers' use of force was ruled unreasonable and unconstitutional. Their request for immunity was denied. And that's the concern that apparently the sheriff's office has. Our major request is that you hold hearings to discuss this policy change with concerned citizens and the leadership of all relevant county agencies. We have four concerns and recommendations. First, current funding for the six mobile crisis support teams and the 10 community wellness response teams is inadequate to perform the responsibilities that the sheriff's deputies will no longer concern, perform. Therefore, we recommend that you transfer needed funding from the sheriff's office to support these teams. We understand that you have that decision-making authority. This morning, I heard a presentation that the sheriff's office made a request to include 30 new positions in their office. From my experience in state administration, I've learned that this is the kind of situation that is more open to discussion, and under the circumstances, I suggest that you consider that kind of transaction in looking at the sheriff's budget. Second, we also recommend that you transfer funding from the sheriff's office for any additional staff and costs needed to implement recent state legislation, SB 43 Care Court, and assisted outpatient treatment in the absence of the sheriff's responses. Third, we recommend that you review the dispatch system, as Kino Hopper suggested, for 911, 988, and the community wellness response teams, so they can be better coordinated and made more efficient. Fourth and finally, we recommend that officer training and supervision be strengthened to ensure that unreasonable force is never exerted in the community and not on folks who are mentally ill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience.
The next item on the agenda is Board of Supervisors appointments from own ranks to regional boards and commissions. This item was continued from January 7th, and so we are looking for your board to make recommendations. The first board would be Area 4 Agency on Aging Governing Board. Supervisor Rodriguez, we're looking for an alternate appointment. Would, do you have one?
Please reappoint, Megan Rose.
Thank you. The next is the Human Services Coordinating Council. It was determined at the last meeting that Zochi Gomez no longer wishes to serve, and we're looking for this board to nominate a Board of Supervisors Designee Ex officio for an indefinite term.
I believe this runs with the chair's post, does it, does it not? I think so. So I will nominate Erin Chung for my office.
Perfect. Next, we have the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. We have two appointments that we need to make. Supervisor Desmond has a term that expired December 31st, 2024, and also the seat that was vacated by Supervisor Frost with a term that expires on December 31st, 2026, so it's a partial term.
So I'd like to nominate Supervisor Kennedy for the now vacant post formerly held by our, in service by Supervisor Frost. And to also nominate Supervisor Desmond.
And so we'll take one sweeping vote for it all, but with that, it also with nominating Supervisor Kennedy for the term that's partial since he is currently the alternate, would you also like to designate an alternate at this time?
Yeah, like nominate Supervisor Rodriguez.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So do you want to vote, should we vote on that now?
Well, one, on one sweeping motion on all of it.
Oh, on all of it, okay. All right.
So the Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board, Supervisor Rodriguez, we're looking for your alternate for this item, and it must be an elected official.
Which one is that one? The...
The Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board. Currently in that seat is Tanya Kravchuk.
She, reappoint her.
Reappoint, okay. And then lastly, on the meeting of January 7th, this board appointed Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Rodriguez to the Sacramento County Safety Net Committee. And subsequent to the meeting, our office, it was revealed to our office that that committee was dissolved in January 14th, 2020, and so we're just asking the board to remove this from the on-ranks, just for transparency's sake. So now we could take a motion on these items. This is for the safety, this is for the Sacramento County Safety Net Committee. So we're just removing it from on-ranks.
Right.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Okay.
Move the item.
Second.
Perfect.
So now I'm really confused, as I always am with this. Are we taking one sweeping vote for the whole thing or not?
One sweeping vote for the whole thing.
All right, so we got the motion about SECOG on there, right? Okay.
So do you want me to read off what we're, what we're moving for right now?
Just, just to be clear.
So we are reappointing Megan Rose as the alternate for District 4 for the Area 4 Agency on Aging Governing Board. We are appointing Erin Chung for the Human Services Coordinating Council, Board of Supervisor Designee Ex officio. We are reappointing Supervisor Desmond to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments for a term expiring December 31st, 2028, appointing Supervisor Kennedy to a partial term expiring December 31st, 2026, and appointing Supervisor Rodriguez as the alternate for a term that expires December 31st, 2028. And then we are removing from the on-ranks the Sacramento County Safety Net Committee, and also appointing, reappointing Tanya Kravchuk to the Sacramento Public Library Authority Governing Board as the District 4 alternate.
All right, that's clear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we vote, though, just a comment about RT, because at the last board hearing, where we had a little bit of discussion about interest on the RT board, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking to my colleagues, Mr. Hume, Mr. Kennedy, who joined me in service on that, that board. City posts on that board have alternates, do they not?
Some cities, not the state of Sacramento, but cities of...
Folsom?
Folsom certainly does, and Citrus Heights.
I'm just wondering out loud whether or not we ought to have at some appropriate time and some appropriate way, a conversation with the general manager of RT as to whether or not the Board of Supervisors should have an alternate, maybe one alternate to serve in case absence of one of the three of us. And the only reason I bring that up is because Supervisor Rodriguez expressed some interest. Those of us that have been serving on RT for years, I think, are very committed to continuing service, but there may be times, like for me, for instance, yesterday afternoon, wasn't feeling well, did not attend, where if we had an alternate, may have been able to have that alternate serve in, in my stead. So I don't know if there's others that think that's a good idea or not, but I think it's worth broaching.
I think it's a great idea. I think the only question is, is it RT or is it us?
Try both, I'm guessing.
That would make this decision.
I believe that would be RT.
If I remember correctly, so right now, the way that it works is an absent supervisor of the vote, the weighted voting gets distributed to the other members. We brought this up a little while back, and there was discussion of having alternates and whether those alternates even needed to be elected. And so I remember there was an issue on this, but I don't know that there was ever full resolution, but I would absolutely support what the chair is suggesting.
Sure. All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
And that item does pass unanimously. Item number 51 on the agenda is for the board to consider nominations to the following. We are continuing to February 4th Carmichael Oldfod Hill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, County Planning Commission, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Human Services Coordinating Council, Public Health Advisory Board, Recreation and Park Commission, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Sacramento Environmental Commission. We are continuing to February 25th, 2025, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Cemetery Advisory Committee, Children's Coalition, Elk Grove Kasumnas Cemetery District, Merfernal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Rio Linda Alverdo Community Planning Advisory Advisory Council, Vineyard Community Planning Advisory Council, and also continuing to March 11, 2025 Assessment Appeals Board, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Galt Arno Cemetery District, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. We will be seeking nominations today for the following boards. The first would be American River Parkway Advisory Committee, looking to Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes. Appoint Matthew Burnett and waive the process.
Second.
And that item passes unanimously. And looking next to Supervisor Rodriguez.
I nominate Amy Brown.
Thank you. The next is Ardent Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council. Supervisor Desmond, you have five position seats on there.
Please nominate Michael Gibbons and reappoint Aaron Stumpf and continue the remainder to March 11.
Thank you. The Community Review Commission, Supervisor Hume.
Please continue to February 25.
Thank you. Law Library Board of Trustees, Chair Serna.
Chief recommend reappointing June Coleman.
Would you like to waive the process on that?
No.
Okay. The Lock Management Corporation, AKA Association, we have a board, one Board of Supervisor appointee, Chair Serna.
The chief recommend the nomination of Morris Lum.
Okay. Next is the Mission Oaks Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Desmond.
Please nominate Michael Tucker.
Thank you. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Serna.
Please continue till March 11.
And Supervisor Desmond.
Please continue to February 25.
And Supervisor Rodriguez.
I nominate John Burchelli.
And would you like to waive the process on that?
Yes.
Second.
Have a second, Serna?
Yes.
Thank you. And that item passes unanimously. The next item is Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Chair Serna, we're looking for a District One nomination.
Please reappoint Tracy Stuckrath and waive the process.
Thank you. And that item passes unanimously. And the Sunrise Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Rodriguez.
I nominate Natalie Price, and please waive the process.
Second.
Okay, beautiful. And that item does pass unanimously. And the very last nomination we're seeking today is for Sylvan Cemetery District, Supervisor Rodriguez.
Please continue to the March 11 meeting.
Beautiful. Next item is 52, County Executive Comments.
Thank you, Nicole, and well done today. I know you've been first try today, so.
Yes, very well done.
Supervisors, I just want to take a moment. Last Thursday, we had a very exciting and important event, and we officially broke ground on the Watt Avenue Safe Stay Community Campus, and I know many of you were there. I think we have a picture of that, that event on the, to put up for everybody to see. This campus is one of the largest safe stays in the region once it opens. This campus will serve 225 people in cabins, 75 people in weather respite, and 50 people in safe parking. This large campus will serve people in various stages of their homeless experience and provide such support as behavioral health, employment services, case management, and much, much more. The community continues to, or the county continues to pursue innovative programs and services to address homelessness, and I believe this is an incredibly proud event for the county. I know the supervisors had a chance to speak at the event, and, and I also wanted to just take a moment and thank the board for this investment. I know we've been working on this for quite some time, and to actually break ground and see this happen, and this will be the third safe stay in the county, and then we have one that recently opened, or the city has one that recently opened that we're managing. So, but thank you for your investment, and thank you for your support at the groundbreaking, so.
Thank you, David. All right, we'll move on to Supervisor comments. I have first in the queue Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. We've heard a lot today, a lot of mention and alluded to of what's going on at the federal level as far as the freeze and all of that. To the CEO, if, if we could when dust kind of settles and we figure out what's going on, if we can make sure and give a somewhat detailed report to the, to the board, be it just an email, doesn't have to come to a board meeting, obviously, but so that we're aware, because we're going to get questions within the community and from nonprofits, no doubt.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't know if you saw the same thing I did, but I received a text message from our county council that, I guess, 22 agencies have already filed suit this morning or this afternoon?
The state of California and 22 other states have filed suit to block the.
There you go.
Here we go.
The directive, yes.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the new artwork in the back of the room. That's from a local artist, Linda Noons. Linda is an award-winning artist who grew up in California's Bay Area and is best known for abstract or surreal encaustic or cold wax oil paintings. Her art journey has taken her through collage, acrylic, cold wax, and encaustic, and ancient and luminous beeswax, and assortment of art media. Her contemporary style moves to a whimsical tune. You may recognize elements of home, the human condition, and often a little foolishness. Her gallery work is primarily on gallery-quality cradled wood panels using a variety of mixed media. Linda has produced several permanent public art projects, including a Sacramento light rail train, eight utility boxes, curbside ceramic mosaics, as well as large mural commissions at local restaurants and law firms. Linda's art degree is from CSU Sacramento, and she works from her home studio in Rancho Cordova, California. So I wanted to congratulate us for hanging a local artist, and then I received an email and about death of one of our probation officers. While the circumstances were suspicious, we don't know the details yet, but I just want to offer my condolences and prayers to the family members.
Well said, thank you. I will conclude with just letting my colleagues and our executive team, as well as the public, know that I had the chance to be in District Five on the 15th twice in one day. First in the morning to welcome the Blue Angels visit. It was a single plane that flew in. It was number seven of the group. It's their winter visit, and of course, this is in anticipation of what I think is going to be a fantastic California airshow at Mather, not in October, or is it September? No, no, but not in, not in, not, not in either September, October, whenever it usually is, but in March. So we are definitely switching it up in terms of both the time and the showcase event. Last year, we had the Thunderbirds. This year, we'll have the Blues. And so that was exciting to be able to, to greet the two pilots that flew in. And then later that afternoon, I had a chance to go back to the Mather campus there and took a tour of nation's finest and the great work that they're offering in terms of making sure that veterans have the resources they need to challenge the consequence of homelessness, ultimately to become self-sufficient, but to kind of move through the continuum of a very innovative campus there. And so I appreciate the opportunity to meet with their, their campus director and learn intimately of the partnership that we enjoy with that particular nonprofit. So with that, if there's no adjournments, I don't see any. Again, I want to thank our staff. I think this was, the meeting was a bit long, but I think bodes well for the future of our meetings to kind of continue as we have here in terms of the, the speed with which we're getting staff reports and briefings, but also presentations and how we're managing public speakers. So again, I want to thank our clerk for doing a wonderful job, and all of you for doing a wonderful job. Great. With that, there's no further business before us. We are adjourned. And we are going to be on the second floor for.